Welcome to the May 7th meeting of the Oceanside City Council. I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order and ask our city clerk, Mr. Navarro, to call roll.
Mayor Sanchez.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Joyce.
President.
Councilmember Figueroa.
Present.
Councilmember Robinson. Councilmember Weiss.
Please close the door in the back, please. We're starting this meeting. Thank you. Please rise for the invocation. Tonight, we have Father Charles Wright from Prince of Peace Abbey sharing his words of wisdom.
Thank you. Let us pray. Divine source of everything, we turn to you for strength, wisdom, and prudence in these troubled and changing times. We are grateful for your bounty that you shower upon us. We acknowledge our limit in dealing with the vast and uncertain courses before us, especially in attending to the finite amount of resources supplied by your providence. We know that the true test of a government is its concern for all, but especially those the most vulnerable. Only through your guidance can solutions be found with reason and especially with the love that is so necessary for the cooperation of diverse and vocal factions. Oceanside is a blessed place, and we ask for your protection and continued supply of worthy stewards to keep it so. And finally, we hold up to you those who are dedicated and have dedicated their lives to protecting this city, the city, the paramedics, the military, ever so present and ever so faithful. So with the deepest gratitude, we seek all of these in your divine name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Father Charles Wright. Please remain standing and join us in the Pledge Allegiance. Mr. Borrego, would you please lead us?
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the rule of voting success, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. I do have the land acknowledgement. We acknowledge the Pa'um Ko'wicham, people of the West, as the traditional land caretakers of the land on which Oceanside is built and its surrounding traditional cultural landscapes. Today, the Pa'um Ko'wicham are known as Luiseño and are made up of seven bands: La Jolla, Palapauma, Pechanga, Rincon, San Wizray, and Suboba. We are mindful of the indigenous peoples in this place, and we pay our respects to Luiseño, past, present, and emerging. We are grateful to have the opportunity to be part of this community in Luiseño Territory and to honor their history, culture, and perseverance of spirit. Thank you. Now, we're doing our proclamations and presentations. And the first one is in honor of Water Safety Month. So we have Manny Gonzalez, our Parks and Rec Director, along with Aquatics Crew, maybe? Yep, front and center. Well, on the side, too. Feeling kind of lonely over here. Of course, being right next to the ocean and some waterways, water safety is very, very important to our city. Whereas, May, Water Safety and Drowning Prevention Month was established through a collaboration effort across the country to promote water safety and drowning prevention. And whereas each year, drowning incidents result in hundreds of emergency room visits, including hospital stays and potential life-altering and permanent disabilities of Oceanside residents and visitors. And whereas California Department of Public Health reports that between 2016 and 2022, 3,693 California residents died from drowning, 2,931 were hospitalized, and 9,734 were treated in an emergency department for non-fatal drowning. And whereas, City of Oceanside acknowledges the launch of the California Water Safety Strategy, which highlights knowledge gaps, major priorities, and action areas where focus is required to reduce the burden of drowning across the state. And whereas, City of Oceanside understands the essential role that education regarding the topic of water safety plays in preventing drowning and recreational water-related injuries. And whereas, City of Oceanside is extremely proud of its aquatic programs and their contributions to fostering lifelong human development, providing recreational experiences beneficial to overall physical fitness, and strengthening sense of place, safety, and security for residents of all ages. And whereas, City of Oceanside is a leader in drowning prevention by offering affordable swim lessons to 3,523 children and adults, and providing safe aquatic recreational opportunities to 113,756 people at the city's three aquatic facilities. And whereas, last year, 3,741,609 people visited Oceanside beaches, with 1,50117 entering the water. So, you know, everybody's being clicking that thing, right, to know how many people are going in the water. And City of Oceanside lifeguards took 14,858 preventative actions, made 1,419 ocean rescues, responded to 1,232 minor medical aides, performed 71 boat rescues, had 403 EMS responses with Oceanside Fire Department, performed 63,412 safe swim and surf area enforcements, and 9,243 law education enforcements. Can you believe that? Isn't that fantastic, what these guys have been able to do? Last, whereas, the City of Oceanside Parks and Rec Department and the City of Oceanside Fire Department acknowledge that drowning is a complex issue and that progress in reducing the burden occurrence of fatal and non-fatal drowning requires collaboration between different sectors and stakeholders with diverse perspectives and approaches. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Sanchez, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2025 as Water Safety Month in Oceanside. I encourage all citizens to celebrate by visiting one of Oceanside's beaches or public swimming pools, and remind everyone to be safer and around the water this summer and all year long. That was a mouthful. Congratulations. Thank you for all your work, guys. You're fantastic.
Thank you, Mayor. So, on behalf of the Parks and Recreation Department, we acknowledge Water Safety Month and advocate for Safer Three, which is, we want safer water, which means that swimming pools have appropriate fencing, that they're well-maintained, safer kids, that they are learning how to swim, that they understand what to do if they're caught in a rip current, generally no water safety, and safer response, that parents are learning CPR, and also that adults recognize their responsibility as a water watcher and supervise attentively the children that are using a swimming pool. So with that, I will also say that we partner with our friends, lifeguards at the beach, and we look at it as a continuum where, being a coastal city, it's so important for our kids to learn how to swim, for, I say kids, but really adults and seniors as well, and that they be able to enjoy the beach safely in such a beautiful city. So with that, I'll pass the mic on, and our team will introduce themselves.
I'm Haley Balch. I'm an aquatic technician.
Hannah Wright, aquatic technician.
Lana Baraski, aquatic technician.
Shane Levy, aquatic technician.
Mark Bossen, recreation supervisor.
Amanda Roswell, aquatic program administrator.
John H. O., division manager.
Greg Trevi, beach lifeguard sergeant with the City of Oceanside Fire Department Lifeguard Division. On behalf of the Lifeguard Division, I'd like to thank council for acknowledging these programs and all the hard work that our 70-plus hourly extra help employees and 19 full-time employees do, and we really appreciate all your continued support.
I'm Lola Swank, beach lifeguard sergeant and junior guard coordinator.
Jonathan Chestner, beach lifeguard sergeant.
Good evening, everybody. David Parsons, fire chief. And I'll keep my message very simple. The best 911 calls are the ones we never receive. Please learn how to swim, and please take care of each other around water. Thank you.
Thank you. So, come on down, council members. Let's have a picture. See how we can all fit in here, right? Thank you. Thank you. And Lola, if you could stay up here, because we have also National Beach Safety Week, right? Yeah. Yeah, thank you. Okay. This is a proclamation in honor of National Beach Safety Week. That's May 19th to 26th. Whereas, the beautiful coastal and inland beaches of Oceanside represent a world-renowned recreational resource. And whereas, Oceanside residents and visitors alike are drawn to these beaches by the millions each year for water and beach activities. And whereas, aquatic environment has dangers, particularly rip currents, that can be effectively managed through public awareness and the vigilance of professional lifeguards. And whereas, for reasons of public safety, an annual reminder of the joys and hazards associated with the aquatic environment are appropriate at the commencement of the busy summer beach season. And whereas, Oceanside residents and visitors alike must remember, swim near lifeguards, learn to swim, learn rip current safety, never swim alone, designate a water watcher, alcohol and water don't mix, feet-first water entry, life jackets save lives, observe signs and flags, and beat the heat and block the sun. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Sanchez, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim May 19th to 26th as National Beach Safety Week in the City of Oceanside, and urge all residents using our beaches to enjoy themselves at the beach this year while taking appropriate measures to protect themselves and their children. Thank you, Lola.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much. Just want to say, make sure you check in with a lifeguard for all, everybody going to the beach, check in with the open lifeguard tower, ask for the safest place to swim, learn to swim, go to your local pools, wear your sunscreen. We're here for you. We have towers open starting Memorial Weekend. It kicks off our summer. And please don't ever hesitate to ask us. We're here for you. We're embracing our families of Oceanside, so please come down and talk with us. We're here for you, guys. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Picture. Councilmembers like to come into this picture. Come on in. See you at the beach. She says, "See you at the beach." Thank you. And as you know, life's a beach. All right, next, we have a proclamation in honor of Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Come on down. So we have FACO, Phil Am Cultural Organization, with Dory Harris as the chair, and she's brought some other folks from FACO. Also, Pasture Tua from Grace, hopefully Pasture Tua from Grace. Win, Twin Win, Fran Bautista, JT Tong, and Jerry Nicholas. Come on down. Okay. Where's Dory? Dory? She's small but mighty. I mean, she really does. Dory does so many events all year long to remind us of the wonderful culture of the Phil Am community as part of the Asian community, Asian American community in Oceanside. So I'm going to go ahead and read a proclamation. Whereas, in 1978, a joint congressional resolution established Asian Pacific American Heritage Week, with the first 10 days of May chosen to coincide with two important milestones in Asian Pacific American history: the arrival in the United States of the first Japanese immigrants on May 7th, 1843, and contributions of Chinese workers in the building of the Transcontinental Railroad completed May 10th, 1869. And whereas, in 1991, Congress unanimously passed Public Law 102-42, signed by President George H.W. Bush, expanding the observance to month-long celebrations thereafter, in 1992, permanently designating May of each year now known as Asian American and Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander Heritage Month, honoring the many contributions, accomplishments, and heritage of approximately 25.6 million people of AANHPI heritage in the United States. And whereas, AANHPI individuals and communities have endured a long history of injustice in our country, including the Page Act of 1875, the Chinese Exclusion Act of 1882, the incarceration of Japanese-American citizens during World War II, the targeting of South Asian Americans, especially those who are Muslim, Hindu, or Sikh, after the national tragedy of 9/11, and most recently, the wave of hate and violence against AANHPI individuals and people based unjustifiably on the COVID-19 pandemic hysteria. And whereas, in a difficult year of pain and fear, we reflect on the tradition of leadership, resilience, and courage shown by the AANHPI people who helped build, lead, and unite our country throughout history, from laying railroad tracks, tilling fields, running businesses, being farmers, scientists, and professors, to caring for one loved ones, to caring for our loved ones by being doctors, nurses, and healthcare workers, including recently during the COVID-19 pandemic, serving at great risk and much personal and family sacrifice, as well as serving our nation in uniform and in many other professions and as volunteers. And whereas, AANHPI people in Oceanside have a long history of service to our city and country, especially serving at our neighboring military installations at Camp Pendleton in San Diego, infusing our community with their many wonderful contributions and cultural activities that add to our city's rich diversity and economic success, celebrated every year through our annual cultural celebrations, such as Filipino-American cultural celebration under the leadership of FACO and President Dory Harris, annual Samoan cultural celebration, annual SoCal Asian Pacific Islander Festival, and other civic and cultural activities and institutions. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Sanchez, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim May 2025 as Asian American and Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander Heritage Month in the City of Oceanside, and ask all residents to join us in celebrating AANHPI history, achievements, leadership, contributions, and challenges with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities, demonstrating our love and support for our fellow Americans who have given and give so much to our city. Thank you. So, Dory, the Pledge Allegiance, please.
Thank you, Mayor Sanchez, for giving this proclamation to us. And, you know, thinking about FACO community, and we are very honored to this day that we can share our heritage to the community. And on June 14, 2025, we will have our 24th Annual Filipino Fiesta from 12 to 6, and we would like to invite you and see what we can give to the community.
24 years, guys.
24 years. And I would like to thank the library, the Oceanside Public Library, in collaborating with us, and we appreciate it. Thank you so much. I'll ask my past president, Belle, to say something, too.
Hello. Magadang hapon po. That's the Tagalog word. But anyway, on June 14, that is a Sunday, from 12 to 6, Saturday, rather, from 12 to 6, you will see a lot of cultural dances. There will be fashion show. You'll see better clothing than what I'm wearing. And there will be also a pageant even for kids and seniors. And of course, there will be a lot of Filipino food. So pancit, adobo, and everything. Okay. Thank you very much again, Mayor Sanchez, for giving us the opportunity.
I'm good. I have, oh, I'm Andrew Fulmore. I'm the director for, one of the board director, and director for cultural dance group.
Hi, everyone. My name is Tess Russell. I am second director of FACO.
And Sida Solar advertisement, by the way.
Now, here's Jerry to say a few words.
Thank you again for having us and recognizing this AANHPI community that contributes largely to each one of our cities, especially Oceanside. So thank you, Mayor. Oh, and thank you, Max, in North County LGBTQ Resource Center. Say hi, guys.
Hi, everyone. My name is Fran, and I was the vendor coordinator for the 2025 SoCal API Festival.
Hi, my name is Jeannie Quack, a restaurant owner called, a restaurant called Wulan Ramen and Tap House.
Hi, everyone. I'm Nani. I'm the housing specialist for the North County LGBTQ Resource Center.
Hi, I'm JT. I'm the logistic in charge of the SoCal API Festival, and I have Hong Kong Club that we have a lot of Asian-related activities around North County, especially Oceanside. That's where I live.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Well, hopefully you all were able to stop by the second annual, and we're calling it annual, right, SoCal Festival that happened here in the Civic Center, and they're promising to do it again next year, right, guys? Okay. Thank you, and thank you very much. And can you join me, council members? Thank you for a picture. And last but not least, and in fact, very important to us here in Oceanside, we have a proclamation in honor of Military Appreciation Month. We have Lori Bodie, Executive Director of VANCE, and Amy Forsyth, U.S. Navy Reserve Public Affairs Officer. Now, first about Lori. She is Executive Director of VANCE, Veterans Association of North County. In her 30 years of business experience, Lori has been a successful local business owner, worked for Adventist Healthcare, and worked for the American Cancer Society. Over the past 20-plus years, she has volunteered for numerous organizations such as the Oceanside Unified School District, Oceanside Museum of Art, and the Assistance League of North Coast. She served as a director for the North County San Diego Stand Down in 2017. She also represents VANCE through the Oceanside Chamber of Commerce and the Chamber's Military Affairs Committee. Lori and her husband, Michael, live in Oceanside, and Michael volunteers at VANCE every week. I'm sure, I'm sure he's asked, right? Or he does it on his own, right? No? Right. Now, also, we have Amy Forsyth, is an award-winning military journalist who served five combat tours in Iraq and Afghanistan, and has been on assignment and has been on assignment on several other overseas missions. Amy started her career as a U.S. Marine Combat Correspondent at Marine Corps Base Camp Pendleton, and currently serves in the U.S. Navy Reserve as Public Affairs Officer. Her photos and videotaken while covering military operations around the world have been featured in numerous international and national media outlets through the years and continues to be used for historical purposes. Amy is the author of Heroes Live Here: A Tribute to Camp Pendleton Marines Since 9/11. She volunteers for various veteran service organizations in San Diego. Amy has lived and worked in San Diego County since 1995, serves on several boards, and supports different nonprofit organizations around the community. Isn't she pretty fantastic? So whereas, for generations, the freedom and security enjoyed by the citizens of the United States are direct results of the continued vigilance and service of the United States Armed Forces, the sacrifices of those who served, those currently serving, and the family members that support them, preserving our liberties over the history of our great nation. And whereas, today, California's military presence is the largest in the nation, at over 218,000 total active-duty and reserve members, with the largest military base at Camp Pendleton. And whereas, California is home to over 1.8 million former service members, which is the largest veteran population of any state in the United States, California also has the most homeless veterans in the United States at over 10,400. And whereas, Camp Pendleton, established in 1942 to train U.S. Marines for service in World War II, has contributed greatly to the diversity and economy of the City of Oceanside. Camp Pendleton has over 42,000 active-duty personnel, 73% living off-base, a daytime population of 70,000 military and civilian personnel, and more than 77,000 retired residing in the San Diego region, many of who make Oceanside their home. And whereas, in 2004, the United States Congress passed a resolution proclaiming May as National Military Appreciation Month, encouraging all citizens to honor current and former members of the U.S. Armed Forces and their families, including those who made the ultimate sacrifice. And whereas, the month of May was selected for this display of patriotism because during this month, we celebrate Victory in Europe Day, the end of World War II on May 8, 1945, Military Spouse Day, Loyalty Day, Armed Forces Day, National Day of Prayer, National Poppy Day, and Memorial Day. And whereas, Veterans Association of North County VANCE was founded in 2007 by veteran Chuck Atkinson. VANCE is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization created by veterans for veterans and active-duty service people and their families to help them navigate life through and after service. VANCE serves as a one-stop resource center for all active-duty military, veterans, and their families. VANCE centralizes services from diverse agencies to assist with jobs, education, benefits, health, and wellness. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Sanchez, on behalf of the City of Oceanside, do hereby proclaim May 2025 as Military Appreciation Month in the City of Oceanside, expressing our gratitude and commitment on this month and throughout the year to service members, veterans, and their families who have dedicated their lives in defense of our freedoms. I'm going to go ahead and hand the mic.
Oh, thank you. Oceanside is second to none when it comes to supporting our military and their families because of people like you and the civic leadership here. Thank you so much. And Lori, of course, and the Marines of Camp Pendleton has been home to the Marines since 1942, has been my great honor to serve here, work with the community, and be a part of it. And there's a saying in the military, "Home is where the military sends you," and if you get orders to Camp Pendleton, it feels like you've won the lottery. And so, thank you for your hospitality and welcoming our Marines and sailors and their families.
Tell us your name. Good evening. This, my name is Lance Corley-Renard.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Lieutenant Colonel Dan Burton. I'm the Deputy Director for Security and Emergency Services. Thank you, Mayor Sanchez. Thank you to the City of Oceanside.
And now the mic to you, Lori. On behalf of VANCE, the Veterans Association of North County, I want to thank each and every one of you in this room, as well as the entire city, for the blessings that you give our active-duty military, our past and present heroes. They're amazing individuals.
They're amazing individuals. They're here out of the goodness of their heart to protect each and every one of us for our great nation. And I just want to thank you for supporting them.
Councilmember?
And Mayor, I wanted to present a copy of my book, Heroes Live Here, to you and the city. It's filled with historical photos and showcasing the memorials and the tributes to the fallen of Camp Pendleton. So, thank you for all you do. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Wow, that was all pretty, pretty fantastic, wasn't it? So, next, we have our closed session report. Mr. Burke?
Thank you, Mayor. The council did not meet in closed session on item one, conference with labor negotiator. However, the council did meet in closed session on item two, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation involving one matter, Tyler Pard versus City of Oceanside. Was discussion and direction provided, but no reportable action under the Brown Act.
Thank you. Next, our consent calendar items, items three through 11. Do we have any requests to pull from, or speak from the public?
We've had requests to pull items number seven, eight, 10, and 11.
All right, motion for balance.
Could I request item nine to be pulled?
Item nine.
Since it's right in the middle of all the other ones.
All right, motion for balance.
Vote the balance.
Okay, I'll go ahead and second that. Let's vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Right, I think we started with seven, right?
That is correct.
Okay. Seven is staff recommends city council to accept $25,000 in grant funds for the County of San Diego Neighborhood Reinvestment Program for fire department equipment. Appropriate these funds to the grant fund account, authorize city manager or designate to execute all related grant documents. And who pulled this?
Allegedly, Audra.
How long do I have?
Two minutes.
Two minutes, thank you. It says three. Oh. Yes, so I wanted to talk about the fire because it doesn't matter how much equipment you have or money you spend to get it. There's a severe problem with the Climate Action Plan that's coming down the pipe and how, you know, there's pushes to put in roundabouts, takeaway, parking spots, do different things that impedes people's ability to actually get around, but also evacuate during a fire. And this was seen up in L.A. in the Palisades. And so, I think that there needs to be something that is done to make sure that you're not impeding people's ability to evacuate, but also that there is a clear plan because this is a public safety issue. And if there's not a clear plan in the city of people understanding like what to do if there was a fire because San Diego, the entire county, is a very high-fire zone, along with putting in things like the Besses, the battery energy storage systems, along with electric vehicles. Those are fire hazards. These are lithium bombs, I like to call them because they're batteries that can combust just from the fumes. And they're very hard to put out. So, as we're implementing all of these things, you're actually putting people at risk by doing that. And that's a problem because nobody is set out to mitigate it. Throughout the county, it's a push to do it. This plan comes from the United Nations. It's their agenda. I mean, it's something very clear that they have done, and it's to control the movements of the people. So, you guys, if you're not aware of the United Nations plan, you should become aware of it because it's not what people think. And it is to put people in 15-minute cities. And so, if you're not going to mitigate the fire risk that you're putting out there, or the things that you're doing to implement to potentially protect the planet, you're putting people at risk. And so, I don't know if you can do some kind of a town hall or something like that so that people know exactly what to do, where to go if there is a fire, so that they're not sitting there waiting when it comes.
Thank you very much. Thank you. This is acceptance of a $25,000 grant. Councilmember Weiss?
Move approval, staff recommendation.
All right, I'll second that. Is there, let's vote on this.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. Next, looks like it's item number eight. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, the city treasurer and staff recommend the city council accept city treasurer's report for the quarter ending December 31, 2024.
So, items pulled by Jimmy Knott.
Mr. Knott?
Mayor, council members, Jimmy Knott, 127 Sherri Lane. The city treasurer the other day stopped me, and we discussed some of the misconceptions that the public has been expressing, especially during the budget, you know, discussions that were taking place recently about the use of the treasury funds. And I am sad to see that the treasurer is not here today because I wanted to provide her in her office the opportunity to explain what those funds are, what the use of them are, and how they cannot be readily used for city general fund use and any other treasurer's office wishes to share with the public. Thank you.
Thank you. There's a motion to approve. There's a motion to second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. Item number nine is staff recommends that we approve the fiscal year 2025-2029 U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Consolidated Plan, including the proposed program budget for the Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership Programs, allocating funding for various housing and community development activities, planning and program administration to be included in the fiscal year 2025-26 Annual Action Plan. And number two, authorize city manager to sign and execute required forms and documents for the grant funds. And number three, authorize the Neighborhood Services Director to sign agreements with sub recipients. Deputy Mayor Joyce?
Thank you. I just pulled this because there's been a lot of, housing funding has been in the media lately because I think the president put out his draft budget, and I wanted to see if Director Hines had any updates from the draft budget that's been put out, whether or not that affected CDBG or home funding, if it is adopted as it's been put out.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members, public here this evening. Yes, last week, President Trump did publish his proposed budget, which included the complete elimination of the CDBG program and the home program and the action plan that you have before you this evening. So, with that complete elimination, eliminates a number of programs that we have slated in our annual action plan for the next year. We allocate about $155,000 for public service types of projects that are really aimed at our youth and our seniors, some of the more vulnerable population groups that we have here in Oceanside. So, with the elimination of the CDBG program, those programs would no longer be able to exist as they are unless they found other funding sources. We also fund a great deal of our, some of our capital projects, some of the ones that are resource centers in our more economically disadvantaged communities. For example, we've done projects like the Crown Heights ADA Pedestrian Ramp, the Caesar Chavez Playground, a playground that provides just a simple swing where a parent can bring their child so they don't have to travel far to let their kids play in an area that's highly dense, densely populated with a lot of vehicles, cars, and brings that type of amenity to a lower-income neighborhood. This year in the con plan, we have, moving forward, we were looking at the Crown Heights Community Center for further funding, parking lot improvements to some of our facilities. So, those we would not be able to fund at all with the elimination of CDBG. I will say that part of our con plan and our annual action plan each year is repayment of our Section 108 program. We have three years yet committed for that, for that fund, amounting to about $825,000. That is guaranteed by the general fund. So, while we may not receive that in CDBG, we would look, HUD would look to the city for repayment of that $825,000 from the general fund. We would also see significant reductions in our housing staff. We employ about three and a half full-time employees as a result of both the CDBG and home administration funds available to us. So, it would be a huge hit to our program and the housing services. I forgot about home. We do a lot of, you all have heard, that our Housing Choice Voucher Program, we have a 10-year waiting list with nearly 5,000 people. We utilize our home funds to kind of help and assist with that and providing tenant-based rental assistance for those folks that are not able to get on Housing Choice Voucher, but that we are able to provide them assistance. So, we've provided assistance to over 100 households who otherwise would not be able to pay rent for the month. So, a huge impact to our community at large. And so, the loss of those funds, we would probably advocate as a city and for any of those of you in the audience who rely on these types of programs, urge you to speak to your legislative representatives about the impacts to the Oceanside community. Just to give you a flavor too, our lower, our renter population here in Oceanside, 66% of them are lower-income renters. And so, those are the folks that we're talking about, a large percentage of our population.
Right, so we did anticipate that this could happen, right? So, it's still gonna go to Congress, and we're, we don't know yet.
We do not know yet. We had anticipated in the con plan that you have before you, we anticipated a 25% reduction. We did not anticipate a 100% reduction in those funds.
I actually did, and kept talking about how we may actually not have any federal funding for our housing department.
We are very hopeful that this has always been something on the chopping block.
Right.
But has never reached this level of 100% elimination.
But we still do need to submit this, correct?
We do. And so, the caveat on this, along with the 25% reduction, is that we would submit the plan. If there were a reduction in funding, then we would make those reductions, whether it's 30%, a full elimination of the program. We would do that. We would not enter, we are not planning on entering into any contracts until a congressional budget has been adopted.
Right, thank you. So, we do still need to do this. And of course, this will be coming up during the budget, our budget hearing. Councilmember Robinson?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. And you kind of commented on it, that it's just proposed, but I don't know, with many of the things that the president has proposed, such as the Department of Education, he's also said that the money would go to the states. Have we delved into that proposed budget deep enough to see if there's any monies that are being given to the states? Or are we just going down this list that was given to us?
We're just going off the list that was going, given to us, but hearing the rhetoric, we don't know that it would go to the state.
Right. So, why don't we go ahead and move this forward, and then we will be discussing that later. So, move approval, is there a second? Okay. Deputy Mayor Joyce, did you want to say anything else? Okay.
So, thank you for reporting out of that. I appreciate it. It would be absolutely devastating if these funds did not come to the city. As Director Hines advocated, if you utilize these programs, absolutely speak up to your congressional representatives. But also, if you don't use these programs, these are a general service to our community, and you benefit them whether or not you're in that housing or not because you are living in a whole community where people who are the most vulnerable are getting services that they absolutely need. So, I will, I'll be drafting a letter to our representative. I welcome any of our colleagues to sign on, and I would move approval. Thank you.
Okay. Second, let's vote. Thought we did.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. Item number 10, staff recommends city council determine that there is need to continue emergency work to repair the 18-inch Mesa Loma water main. And that is. Audra?
Two minutes. Yeah, it's interesting to see why funding's being cut. It's because of the choices that have been made across the board. So, it's unfortunate that people are going to suffer because of that, but they're already suffering because a lot of this stuff is a scam. With this emergency work, there tends to be a lot of emergency work that's being done in the county because infrastructure isn't being maintained. Money is being, you know, put from, supposed to be for maintenance, and it'll be taken and allocated to something else, leaving the infrastructure to have issues like that. And if there was a maintenance happening on a regular basis, then we wouldn't have all of these emergency repairs. And then you, and it winds up costing the people in the community more money because of the negligence of people like different cities or the county that are refusing to actually upkeep something, and then you have something like a storm come in, and people suffer even more because of the infrastructure not being maintained. So, we shouldn't be in situations where we have to do emergency repairs. There should be some, you know, checks and balances of making sure that you guys are doing what needs to be done to keep these things in good, you know, running order or whatever. And so, I just think you need to be mindful of that because it's just, it's a waste of the people's money. And I know you guys get paid to sit up on that dais, and you're not struggling like the people out here in the community. But people are suffering, and they're the ones that have to pay for the negligence that happens with people on boards and their decisions and their refusal to actually mitigate issues before they become an emergency. So, I mean, if you really care about the people and want to make sure that you're not costing them extra money, I mean, this is the kind of things, like there's fraud, waste, and abuse happening on a massive scale all over the nation, and that's why funding's being cut. So, if you were to do your job and make sure that it doesn't need to get to this kind of a place, funding won't be cut. But it's the choices that you guys have made, and that's a big problem.
Thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and move approval. Is there a second? Councilmember Robinson?
Mayor, thank you. And I know a lot of times, we just want to let the comments go, but I think it's important because the public hears it, that the problem with the pipeline, and I'll ask the city manager, correct me if I'm wrong, was found during a maintenance, they noticed it was being done through the maintenance program. And the emergency work is so that we can bypass some of the permitting process or get top, is that, am I correct?
Yes, Honorable Mayor and council, that is correct.
So, it's not because our crews weren't out doing their job? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Our crews do an excellent, excellent job. Okay, there's a, there's a motion, and a second, please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. Item number 11, staff recommends city council reject all bids for the construction of the Loma Alta Slough Wetlands Enhancement Project and authorize staff to re-advertise the project. Mr. Knott?
Mayor, council members, Jimmy Knott, 127 Sherri Lane. Very simply, I would like to know why this is being rejected. And secondly, that historically, the, according to former direct, water director and public works director, et cetera, et cetera, historically, the slough of Loma Alta area extended beyond just the current planning area, clear up past the old social services building to where the new development is. Just so, I wanted to let you know that the planning area for the wetlands is not covering the entire Loma Alta slough from historical documents. Thank you.
Thank you. Response to his comment? Wants to know why it's being rejected.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Sanchez, council members. My name is Bronte Cash. I'm the Watershed Protection Program Manager and the project manager for this project. To answer Mr. Knott's question about why the bids are rejected, it is because they were over the engineer's estimate. So, they were, they were two times the amount of the engineer's estimate. So, that is why we're asking council to reject bids.
Thank you. Move approval, Councilmember Weiss?
I was just gonna say, the reason for the rejection is clearly stated in the actual staff report. If people agree to it, then I'll second the motion.
Okay, there's a motion, and a second, please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and get started with number 14. That is Mayor and. That is Mayor and Councilmember Items. This is my request and Deputy Mayor Joyce's request to discuss adding a flagpole at City Hall and flying the Pride flag during the month of June and direction to staff. Deputy Mayor, did you want to say something?
Sure. So, I want to thank the mayor first for partnering with me on this, on this together. Raising the Pride flag has been something our community members have been asking for for many, 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 many years, and I'm...
Could you please shut that off?
At this time, it couldn't be more important to do it. We, we understand clearly that parts of our community, people in our community are being targeted officially and just out in the neighborhoods, and I think it's an important statement for us to say that we support, affirm, and appreciate all the members of our community, and that's what this will do.
Thank you. So, in order to... In order to move this forward for, for action, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we fly the Pride flag during the month of June. And is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. How many, how many requests to speak from the public?
Well, currently, right now, we have 35 speakers on this item.
Okay, 35. So why don't we go ahead and get started?
Okay. How many minutes?
Two.
Two. Okay.
So, there are 35 speakers on this item. We're gonna go ahead and start listening to them. We do have a 6 o'clock time certain item, a public hearing, so we'll, we'll stop at about 6 o'clock, and then we will continue with the item after the public hearing. All right? So because there are 35 speakers, I'm asking that you take two minutes, up to two minutes to speak, and, you know, I'll try to let you finish your, your comments at the 2 o'clock, I mean, at the, at the two minutes.
Okay.
Do we have the bell working now, or not?
We, we do not.
Okay. So, so I'll have to probably say, thank you, at the end of your two minutes. All right, go ahead and get started.
Okay. We have two podiums. When you see your name up on the screen, or when the mayor calls your name, please start making your way down to either podium. They're the same podium, there's nothing special about either. When you see the green light, that means go. Yellow light means time to wrap up, and the red light means your time is up. So our first speaker is Lisa Nava, to be followed by Beth Barnum.
Honorable Mayor Sanchez and City Councilmembers, it's a true honor to be in these chambers tonight. I stand as the Director of Operations for the North County LGBT Center and an ally to the LGBTQ community. I stand to speak tonight, and I'll keep my comments brief, to say just two things. One is, thank you for bringing this item forward. Oceanside was our first Pride proclamation in the region, and others have followed. This is not the only flag that will be flown during, during Pride Month. We have three other cities that'll be joining us, maybe four. And I want to say that this is your time to lead. It is not a time to be silent and complicit. We have people that are really under attack and fearful. So the flag, although not for everyone, a beacon of hope, it is a beacon of hope for the LGBTQ community, and you have many, many people here in Oceanside that come to Oceanside for the acceptance and inclusion, and I really support you voting yes on this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right. So, in order, thank you, thank you. In order to get through tonight and get everybody, be able to listen to everyone and not cut people off, when, you know, instead of clapping, I, you know, we can see you, you do this. If you like something, do this, and we really can see it, okay? I also, you know, snapping your fingers is a good thing too, all right? So next is Beth Barnum, followed by Roxanne Deathridge, followed by Vigo Rasmussen. Beth? Barnum? Is there a Beth?
No.
Okay. Roxanne Deathridge, followed by Vigo. Okay. You can be at the second pole, by the way. Podium.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Sanchez, Deputy Mayor Joyce, and Councilmembers. My name is Roxanne Deathridge, and I am the Director of Pride by the Beach. For the past 18 years, our amazing city has proudly hosted the most beloved LGBTQ festival in the region. I've seen firsthand the way Oceanside shows up for our community, not just with words, but with action. People make their way to Oceanside for pride because they feel safe here. In a time where LGBTQ rights are under attack across this country, Oceanside stands out. Here, inclusion, inclusion isn't just a word, it's a lived value. From our local businesses to our city officials, this community has built a reputation as a place that uplifts and protects the LGBTQ people, whether they live here or are just visiting, and they feel the safety, and to feel that is powerful. It's why people come to Pride, it's why they keep coming back all year. That's why raising the Pride flag for the first time this year isn't just a statement, it's essential. At a time where our queer and trans youth are being targeted with fear and hate, Oceanside has the opportunity to be brave. Raising the flag says to every resident, every visitor, every young person, you are welcome here, you are safe here, you belong here. This moment matters, and history will remember who stood up, who showed up, and who chose to raise that flag. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Vigo Rasmussen, followed by David Dobinsbeck.
I'm honored to be here, in front of the Council. I know SS Sanchez, we go back, and everybody over here, I'm blessed to be here and to talk to all, everybody. I'm coming forward to talk as a family member. We're all families, regardless of our differences, we're all together. This is our city, and we have to make it work. You know, we need to put away our anger, our violence, whatever kind of misunderstanding we have, but we need to come together as a family. The only thing we can work together is unity. Unity to make this city of Oceanside be a blessed city. God created everybody, you know, and we need to have that spirit of love and forgiveness. If we're not agreeing with anybody, it's okay. You just say, hey, we love you, and we keep going. But the main thing is to discuss this issue over here, that I'm looking over here at they requesting to adding a pole at the City Hall and fly the Pride flag during the month of June. So my understanding is this is specifically for the month of June. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, having cleared that, let's all try to agree, we don't disagree, we disagree, that's okay too. You know, in any family, there's always disagreement, but we need to love each other, forgive, and move forward, you know? God loves us all, and He created everybody to enjoy. The sign of the rain blowing today is on Noah, that there will be no more flood to destroy the world, and that's why God put that rainbow up in the sky, as a sign that God loves everyone. So I love you all, and thank you for the opportunity to speak in this, it is my first time, so I'm kind of a little nervous, but I love you all. It's great to be here.
Thank you, Vigo.
God bless you all.
Thank you, Vigo. David Dobinsbeck, followed by Patty Kaye, followed by Celeste Barbier.
I see that David isn't here yet.
Okay. Patty?
Let's talk common sense tonight. We are debating the wisdom of flying a Pride flag, of which the very definition is commonly considered to be a character weakness to be overcome. It is common to most of us to an extent, but it is, is it to be admired? Common sense says we look to a symbol as inspiration. The American flag, as the veterans here tonight will testify, represents united brothers and sisters standing firm as one. It is, for all US citizens, it unites. Common sense knows that the Pride flag does not stand for all. Statistics indicate that 92.1% of Oceansiders are not in this group. We don't have... Okay, sorry. As you see by the graph. Would Council ask taxpayers to pay for a separate flagpole for a new pope, for a Republican flag, or for an Islamic, cisgender, or senior flag? I would not expect them to. You took a note to advocate for all citizens, this request is not. The North County Resource Center has a big, beautiful flag, visible from everybody 24/7, 365 days a year, that is, is on their own property. That is where it should be, on their own property. Common sense says you will be opening the door to legal liabilities if you favor, favor one flag over the hundreds of other ethnic and civic-minded groups in Oceanside. You would never be able to fit or afford all the flagpoles needed. If you fear being sued by Sacramento for defying the housing mandates, why would you invite being sued with discrimination lawsuits over a flag? Common sense says that you review outcomes of hundreds of thousands of dollars awarded to the Resource Center before you vote. Recently, they had $70,000 plus for a safe parking lot.
Thank you very much.
Common sense says...
Thank you. No, don't, hey, no. No, no, no. Stop that, please stop that. We're gonna hear every single person, and as Vigo said, with love, right? We're doing this with love and grace. Celeste?
I'm here with Celeste Barbier, and I'm president here in Oceanside. I moved over 30 times...
Excuse me. It is 6 o'clock now, so Jerry, sorry, you'll have to wait, sorry, apologies. I know you got really excited to see your name, yeah, I know. So this is item number 12. And we have all parties here, correct? Yes. Staff recommends City Council adopt a resolution upholding the Planning Commission's certification of a final environmental impact report and associated mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and approval of development plan, tentative parcel map, and density bonus to allow the construction of a 199-unit, 100% affordable housing project located on a 43 and a half acre site situated at the western terminus of Olive Drive. I'm gonna go ahead and open this public hearing and request disclosure from councilmembers regarding constituent contacts and/or correspondence.
Staff, the applicant, the appellant, several neighbors, and I've been to the site.
Can I say ditto? Because staff, app, all the same.
Yeah. I visited the site, I've received a lot of communications, both writing and orally. When I visited the site, I did meet with neighbors, and I've spoken with staff.
I also visited the site with the neighbors, I've spoken with staff in multiple departments, and met with the applicant multiple times.
Yeah, I've met with the applicant, the appellate, visited the site with the neighbors, attended the community session, talked with multiple departments, and with multiple community residents.
Thank you. Mr. Vawal, do we have any correspondence and our petitions?
All the correspondence received by my office has been forwarded to the Council prior to the meeting.
All right, thank you. Well, we're gonna go ahead and get a presentation by Ms. Shannon Vitale, our city senior planner. Ms. Vitale?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
The switch.
Apologies. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor Sanchez, City Council. I'm Shannon Vitale, Senior Planner in the Development Services Department. I'm here tonight to discuss Agenda Item Number 12, an appeal to the Planning Commission's decision to approve the Olive Park apartment project. Staff recommends the City Council uphold the Planning Commission's unanimous decision to certify the environmental impact report and approve the development plan, tentative parcel map, and density bonus for the Olive Park 100% affordable housing project. The project site outlined in black on this slide is located at the western terminus of Olive Drive, just south of the College Boulevard Sprinter Station. The total project site encompasses approximately 43.5 acres. The site, which is currently vacant, is surrounded by residential development to the east and south, the North County Transit District rail line, College Boulevard Sprinter Station, Loma Alta Creek, and industrial and commercial uses to the north, and open space to the west. The property has a general planned land use designation of medium-density residential, a zoning designation of single-family residential, and is located within the Maracosta Neighborhood Planning Area. As illustrated on this slide, there is disturbed habitat, which is shown in gray on the slide, and non-native grassland, shown in yellow, on the northeastern portion of the parcel. Native vegetation, including coastal sage scrub, which is shown in brick on the slide, and southern mixed chaparral, shown in brown, is located on the southern and western portions of the parcel. Loma Alta Creek, which is shown in blue, flows from east to west through the western portion of the parcel. On June 26, 2024, the City Council selected the Olive Park apartment project as one of three projects to receive financial assistance for developing a 100% affordable rental housing project. The project was awarded $6 million of city funding. Pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, an environmental impact report was prepared. The project that was analyzed in the draft environmental impact report included the development of a maximum of 282 units. BIR also identified three project alternatives: the no-build alternative, the reduced density alternative, or the RDA, and the reduced footprint alternative. Responding to input received during the public review period, the RDA project, which was also determined to be the environmentally superior alternative, was selected as a preferred project, and it is this project that was described in the staff report. On January 27th of this year, the Planning Commission voted to approve the project. The Olive Park project requires three entitlements: a development plan to allow for the construction of a 199-unit residential development, a tentative parcel map to subdivide the existing parcel into three separate parcels, and a density bonus to construct a 100% affordable housing project pursuant to state law. The total impact area for the project is 10.87 acres and includes a 6.33-acre development pad located at the northeastern portion of the parcel. The remaining site acreage, which totals 32.63 acres, would be placed in a permanent conservation easement. As illustrated on this slide, the total impact area, which is outlined in red, is located at the northeastern portion of the parcel that is primarily disturbed habitat and non-native grass. Extensive perimeter landscaping, including a landscaped open space area with bench seating at the northeastern corner of the parcel, would be established on-site. This open space area, which the property manager would maintain, is designed to be accessible to the public and includes the construction of a pedestrian bicycle pathway to the College Boulevard Sprinter Station, located just north of the project site. The applicant has coordinated with the North County Transit District regarding the alignment of the proposed connection to the Sprinter Station. The Transit District voiced support for this component of the project because it would increase accessibility to the Sprinter Station and would be available for use by the existing neighborhood as well as residents of the future project. Although onsite parking is not required, the project provides 382 parking spaces on-site. As can be seen on the slide, the parking spaces are distributed around the perimeter of the buildings and in the western portion of the pad. The project includes two separate four-story buildings with a maximum height of 50 feet. The buildings would contain 199 rental units, ranging in square footage from 540 square feet to 1,109 square feet. The floor plans would range from one to three bedrooms, as detailed on the table on the slide. There's approximately 36,000 square feet of common open space, and that includes amenities such as a community garden, courtyards, a dog run, playground area, and a paseo. The proposed density of the project is 5.7 dwelling units per acre. This density is below the allowable density for the single-family zoning district, which is 5.9 dwelling units per acre. The project entrance would be enhanced with landscaping, an entryway sign, decorative fencing, and a publicly accessible open space area. There would also be a... There would also be 100 feet of new sidewalk installed at the western edge of Olive Drive and a publicly accessible pathway to the College Boulevard Sprinter Station. This is a rendering of what the project would look like from the terminus of Olive Drive. The proposed architecture is a contemporary Spanish style that incorporates tower elements, an arched entryway, red clay tile roofing materials, iron balcony railings, and decorative window awnings. Access to the site would utilize a new driveway off of Olive Drive. Resident and guest access from Olive Drive would lead to internal vehicular drives and pedestrian walkways. The internal drive aisles surrounding the buildings are designed at 28 and 36-foot widths, and the site has been designed in consultation with the Oceanside Fire Department and would accommodate fire apparatus tracks and other emergency service vehicles. It should be noted that Olive Drive was never intended to remain a cul-de-sac, as shown in this figure, because Olive Drive is the only legal access to the parcel. As part of the final map approval for the College Park Estates Unit Number Eight, which is the existing residential neighborhood located immediately east of the project site, there is a one-foot strip of Olive Drive that was granted to the city of Oceanside. Through this one-foot strip connection, access to the project site from Olive Drive was designed and implemented with original subdivision map and was designed to provide a direct connection subject to property. Although not required for SEQA, alternative vehicular access points were evaluated. Many of the residents along Olive Drive have expressed a desire for access to take place from Avenida del Oro. However, this would require acquisition of private property, a bridge over Loma Alta Creek, and disturbance of sensitive habitat. Additionally, coordination with NCTD and the California Public Utilities Commission would be required for an at-grade crossing. NCTD staff has stated that any at-grade crossing would not be able to impact any of the existing platform stations located on either side of the Sprinter tracks. Due to where the platforms are located, it appears that the industrial building and the parking lot located just north of the project site would be impacted to accommodate any potential vehicular access connection to Avenida del Oro. Additionally, NCTD has indicated they would not support any proposal that would obstruct or impact their use of the parking lot located just north of the Sprinter tracks. As part of this project, 32.63 acres would be placed in an open space conservation easement managed in perpetuity by an agency, nonprofit organization, or other entity that's approved by the California Department of Fish and Wildlife and the United States Fish and Wildlife Services. The project is conditioned to provide a habitat management plan that details how the open space conservation easement would be managed, maintained, and monitored. This plan requires approval by the city and the wildlife agencies. As illustrated on this slide, in addition to the existing 14.72 acres of coastal sage scrub on-site, another 3.72 acres of disturbed habitat would be restored to coastal sage scrub. This results in approximately 19 acres of coastal sage scrub preserved and restored on-site. A tentative parcel map's requested to subdivide the existing parcel into three parcels as follows. Parcels I and Parcel B would make up the total impact area, which is 10.87 acres. This includes a development pad area and the manufactured slopes surrounding the development pad, as well as the public open space area located at the project entry and pedestrian crossings to College Boulevard Sprinter Station. Parcel A is the land set aside under conservation. The density bonus application is a request to construct a 100% affordable housing project. There is a correction to the staff report regarding the affordability of the units. 39 units instead of 40 would be set aside for moderate-income households earning no more than 120% area median income. And 158 instead of 157 units would be set aside for low-income households earning no more than 80% AMI. Two units would be set aside for onsite property managers or maintenance staff. The table on the right on this slide provides a breakdown of the unit types by affordability. Of the 158 units reserved to households earning no more than 80% AMI, 38 would be one-bedroom units, 46 would be two-bedroom, and 74 would be three-bedroom units. Of the 39 units reserved to households earning no more than 120% AMI, 10 would be one-bedroom, 11 would be two-bedroom, and 18 would be three-bedroom. Pursuant to state law, by reserving 100% of the project units as affordable, the project is entitled to four incentives or concessions. The applicant has requested two concessions for this project: to reduce the usable open space area and to waive certain provisions of the hillside development provisions. The applicant has provided reasonable documentation in the form of a cost analysis for each requested concession that details the identifiable cost reductions that result by granting the concessions. Staff has evaluated the requested concessions and determined that a specific adverse impact would not result by granting the requested concessions to the applicant. The project is also eligible for unlimited waivers from development standards. In order to construct the project as proposed, the applicant is requesting waivers from the following development standards: building type, maximum retaining wall height, plantable wall requirements, and hillside development regulations. As explained in the staff report, in accordance with state density bonus law, a city cannot deny or condition a project or otherwise deny a requested incentive or concession or waiver unless findings are made that the project would have a specific adverse impact. A specific adverse impact is defined as a significant, quantifiable, direct, and unavoidable impact based on objective identified written public health or safety standards, policies, or conditions. Staff has reviewed the requested concessions and waivers and did not determine there would be a specific adverse impact by granting those requests. Furthermore, the city may only deny a requested incentive or concession if the city makes findings based on substantial evidence that the incentive or concession requested does not result in significant cost reductions that provide for the production of affordable units or would otherwise violate state or federal law. Staff has reviewed the project for compliance with the general plan and found it consistent with the goals and policies of the land use element, specifically regarding community enhancement, land use compatibility, housing, landscaping, natural resource management, and vegetation and wildlife habitat. The project complies with the goals and policies of the housing element because it provides 199 affordable housing units to the city's housing stock. Specifically, the project implements housing element policies that encourage the following: higher-density housing along transit corridors, production of affordable housing, and providing housing opportunities for low- and moderate-income households. The project was also reviewed for compliance with the Energy and Climate Action Element and found to be consistent with that element because it promotes smart growth and multimodal transportation. The project sites located adjacent to the Oceanside Boulevard College Boulevard Smart Growth Opportunity Area, as designated by Sandag, and is in close proximity to a wide range of commercial uses, including restaurants, retail, and grocery stores. The site is immediately south of the existing College Boulevard Sprinter Station, and project design features such as the new pedestrian connection would encourage future residents of the project to use existing public transit. As part of the project, 32.63 acres of land would be preserved in perpetuity as an open space conservation area. This area, which is shown in green on the image at the bottom of the slide, would be enhanced with the planting and establishment of native plants, including coastal sage scrub, that provide vital habitat for many sensitive and protected species. Therefore, the project's compliant with the goals and policies of both the Energy and Climate Action Element and the Climate Action Plan. Since the project site is located in the RS zoning district, it was subject to the provisions of Article 10 of the zoning ordinance. As detailed in the staff report, the project complies with or exceeds most development standards for the zoning district, and where it does not, as previously discussed, the applicant has requested waivers or incentives and concessions. Due to the topography of the parcel, the project was also reviewed for compliance with hillside development provisions. As explained in the staff report and earlier in this presentation, consistent with state law, the applicant has requested incentives, concessions, and waivers from certain hillside provisions. The project was reviewed for compliance with the Climate Action Plan ordinance and, as proposed, meets or exceeds all applicable requirements, as shown on this slide. The proposed density for the project is 5.7 dwelling units per acre, which, as I mentioned before, is below the allowable density for both the zoning district and the general plan land use designation. Therefore, the proposed project is below the permitted density. In accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act, an environmental impact report was prepared because potential impacts to air quality, biological resources, cultural resources, geology and soil, and tribal cultural resources were identified. A public scoping meeting was held on May 9 of last year to gather input from the community. The draft DIR was circulated for a 45 public review period on October 25, 2024. Staff received 26 letters during that period. All letters received and staff's responses to those letters were included in the final environmental impact report. The draft environmental impact report included an analysis of the three project alternatives, and again, it was the reduced density alternative that was identified as the environmentally superior alternative. The final DIR and the mitigation monitoring and reporting program were posted online and available for public review starting on January 17. The project has been conditioned to comply with all project design features included in the final DIR and all mitigation measures listed in the mitigation monitoring and reporting program. With implementation of the project design features and mitigation measures, the project will not have a significant adverse impact on the environment. As previously stated, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to approve the project on January 27. On February 6, the city received an appeal of the Planning Commission's approval from the Maricosta Neighbors for Responsible Development. The full letter of the appeal was attached to the staff report for reference. Staff has grouped the issues listed by the appellant into the following categories, listed on this slide. In the next few slides, I'll summarize the issues raised by the appellant and provide staff's responses to those issues. The first issue raised in the appeal is regarding baseline traffic. The appellant states the final environmental impact report overstates the amount of baseline traffic on Olive Drive, west of College Boulevard, and at the intersection of Olive Drive and Bradley, and that the city failed to verify the accuracy of the data provided. Additionally, the appellant states the city dismissed independently verified traffic counts, and the ER traffic analysis fails to use substantial evidence and incorporates inflated baseline traffic counts, thereby requiring a new traffic study. As described in the staff report, the baseline traffic information was collected using reputable methods to gather and report existing traffic data. The data was reviewed by the city traffic engineering staff, as well as independent sources, and no errors in the data were observed. The local transportation study was completed by a licensed traffic engineer with 33 years of experience and was reviewed and approved by the city traffic engineering staff. The data and conclusions within the traffic study were found to be consistent with the city's traffic guidelines. The traffic counts submitted by the appellant were not performed in accordance with accepted industry standards, nor were they prepared by a person or firm with traffic engineering experience, which is required to conduct a reliable traffic study. The second topic area raised in the appeal concerns traffic generation. The appellant contends that the city improperly relies on the ITE trip generation data to calculate level of service, and the use of the ITE is legally deficient. Additionally, the appellant claims the failure to integrate transit passes undermines the project's transit-oriented goals. The city council's adopted traffic impact analysis guidelines authorize the use of ITE trip generation rates, as ITE rates are more current than Sandag, and ITE is a recognized and reliable resource used by jurisdictions throughout the county, state, and country. In accordance with Policy 6 of the city's Traffic Impact Analysis Guidelines, the city traffic engineer may approve the use of the ITE trip generation rates. Furthermore, city staff use ITE trip generation rates for development projects since the Sandag rates are now outdated. Additionally, the ITE rates used in the final DIR are considered superior for evaluating projects like the proposed project. Pursuant to SEQA, vehicle miles traveled, or VMT, is a proper metric for analyzing the significance of transportation impacts, not level of service. Additionally, the project is consistent with the city's goals for transit-oriented development due to its proximity to the College Boulevard Sprinter Station and bus service routes. Although not required for the project, the applicant has agreed to include a transportation demand management program. Staff is recommending that the city council direct staff to revise the resolution of approval for the project to include a condition of approval regarding the requirement for a transportation demand management program. The condition of approval would read as follows. The developer will implement a transportation demand management, or TDM, plan for the project. This TDM plan will be effective prior to initial building occupancy and will include the following: an assigned TDM program staff coordinator responsible for program implementation and monitoring, an annual report submitted to the city, including occupancy, parking utilization, description of TDM program elements and utilization, resident survey information available regarding mode share on home, work, and homeschool trips, unbundled parking, an information packet provided to new residents reviewing transportation options and providing links to Sandag and other ride-share programs, a bike-share program, and transit pass subsidies. The third issue raised in the appeal concerns cumulative traffic, and the appellant's claim that the final DIR should have included the College Boulevard whining project in the cumulative analysis. As explained in the staff report, the final DIR did include an analysis of the cumulative impacts. The proposed College Boulevard whining project is included in the DIR's 2050 Cumulative Impact Analysis section. The College Boulevard whining project was excluded from the near-term analysis in the DIR because it is not anticipated to begin construction until 2027 at the earliest, and with a completion date no earlier than spring of 2030. Thus, the timing for completion is more than two years after the occupancy completion of the proposed project. Therefore, pursuant to SEQA, it was not required to include the College Boulevard whining project in the near-term impact analysis. The fourth issue raised in the appeal regards bikes and safety. The appellant claims the proposed project needs to implement traffic calming measures and bicycle infrastructure improvements. As explained in the staff report, traffic and bicycle safety impacts have been analyzed and accounted for in the final DIR. This analysis demonstrates that the proposed project would not have a significant impact to pedestrians or bicyclists. The proposed project would provide a new all-weather pedestrian and bicycle path to the Sprinter Station, which improves connectivity. The final DIR demonstrates that under current, near-term, and build-out scenarios, the segments of Olive Drive, west of College Boulevard, would not exceed operational capacity as a collector's street. The final ER complies with city traffic guidelines and demonstrates that no pedestrian or bicycle infrastructure deficiencies would exist upon completion of the project. The fifth issue raised by the appellant concerns a provision of an emergency vehicle access road. The appellant claims the city misapplied the fire safety code and interpreted the fire code wrong. As detailed in the staff report, the Oceanside Fire Department reviewed the plans for compliance with the applicable provisions of the California Fire Code. The plans were reviewed and approved by the Oceanside Fire Department, and the appropriate fire code sections were applied to the project. Since the project does not exceed 200 units and is not located in a very high fire severity zone, secondary access is not required per California Fire Code. The sixth topic area raised in the appeal concerns the fire risk maps. The appellant stated the project did not consider climate change and wildfire risk and failed to account for a high-fire risk classification and omitted a wildfire impact analysis, thereby not complying with SEQA. However, the appellant also stated that outdated fire maps were used, and the project should not move forward until the release of updated fire maps. The updated fire hazard severity zone map was released on March 25 of this year. As shown on this slide, the project site is not located in a very high fire severity zone, per the California State Fire Department. The map on this slide shows areas of the city identified as being located in a very high, which is shown in red, high, shown in orange, or moderate, shown in yellow, fire severity zone. Since the site is not designated or located near a very high fire severity zone, secondary access is not required, and the project complies with the applicable provisions of the California Fire Code. Additionally, SEQA only requires wildfire analysis for sites located in or near very high fire severity zones. Due to its location, a wildfire analysis was not required to be prepared for the project pursuant to SEQA. The seventh topic issue raised in the appeal is regarding the need for a fire evacuation study. The appellant claims the final DIR did not adequately address emergency access issues, and the city should require a fire evacuation study to be prepared. Pursuant to SEQA, the final DIR included an analysis of whether the project would impair implementation of or physically interfere with an adopted emergency response plan or evacuation plan. The analysis included in the DIR demonstrates the project would result in a less-than-significant impact. The project was reviewed for compliance with county and city emergency operation plans and was found to not impede access of emergency vehicles to the project or the surrounding area. Additionally, during emergency events, law enforcement and the fire department would coordinate and control the circulation system to efficiently evacuate those requiring evacuation during an emergency. As stated earlier, the project site is not located in a very high fire severity zone, and therefore, a fire evacuation study is not required pursuant to SEQA or any other city policy. The eighth topic area raised in the appeal concerns alternate access to the site. The appellant alleges that the applicant dismissed alternative access routes, failed to comply with SEQA, and provided misleading information regarding alternate access. I would like to acknowledge that staff inadvertently omitted the appellant's issue 5.6 from the staff report. This issue is regarding the one-foot strip of land along Olive Drive. Although the specific language in this appeal point was not included in the staff report, the appeal point is related to the issues raised regarding alternate access, and staff did respond to that appeal point when discussing alternate access. Pursuant to SEQA, an DIR shall describe a range of reasonable alternatives to the project or to the location of the project, which would feasibly attain most of the basic objectives of the project, but would also avoid or substantially lessen any of the significant effects of the project. The DIR complies with this provision of SEQA because three project alternatives were evaluated. SEQA does not require the city to consider alternatives to a component CEQA does not require the city to consider alternatives to a component of a project or alternatives for the project's less-than-significant impacts. Regarding the project taking access from Olive Drive, as shown on the recorded map for the College Park Estates Unit Number 8, the one-foot, one-foot strip, which is shown in red on this slide, is not only at the westerly edge of the cul-de-sac, but also at the edge of the subdivision where the bulb transitions into a standard width 60-foot right-of-way. This configuration allows for a future street connection, since it is run to the edge of the subdivision, and the one-foot strip is placed there. The city's licensed land survey consultant has reviewed the recorded map and agreed that the one-foot strip of land along Olive Drive was intended to allow future ingress and egress to the project site. Since the project site has legal access to Olive Drive, no requirement exists for the EIR to evaluate alternative access sites, since the project's access from Olive Drive does not cause a significant. The ninth topic area raised in the appeal is regarding noise. The appellant claims that a new noise study should be required because the baseline studies are inaccurate and the EIR underestimated noise impacts. As disclosed in the final EIR and explained in the staff report, the noise analysis for the project was done in accordance with CEQA. The noise levels do not exceed any applicable regulatory standard. The claim made by the appellant was evaluated by an acoustic engineer and was found to not be a valid argument, as it was based on a misunderstanding of noise propagation. In a manner similar to the state, state's land use planning guidelines, the city's adopted noise element relies on the 65 decibel standard to measure susceptibility, susceptibility of roadway noise along the city's circulation network. It should be noted that different standards apply to traffic noise and operational noise. Under city standards, a noise impact due to transportation noise is potentially significant if predicted traffic noise levels exceed 65 decibels. As a noise study prepared for the EIR indicates, traffic noise on Olive Drive west of College Boulevard would remain below 65 decibels, and therefore, not have a significant effect, impact. Pursuant to city code, the threshold for operational noise in the single-family residential district is 50 decibels for the daytime hours, and 45 decibels during the nighttime, 45 decibels during the nighttime hours. Based on the noise analysis prepared for the project, the proposed project is predicted to be up to a maximum of 42 decibels, thereby complies with the provisions for operational, operational noise. The appellant states that a 5-decibel increase in noise level is significant. However, that is not considered a significant impact per CEQA, and the maximum noise levels with the project remain lower than, than the allowable threshold established by the city's adopted noise ordinance. Furthermore, the proposed project would contribute a 30% fewer trips than the project analyzed in the EIR, and therefore, the maximum noise levels associate, associated with transportation would be even lower. As for construction noise, the analysis provided in the EIR demonstrated that the project does not exceed the allowable construction noise threshold of 80 decibels. The 10th issue raised by the appellant is regarding the affordable housing commitments and the funding justification for the project. As previously explained in this presentation, the project complies with state density bonus law provisions for a 100% affordable housing project. The city council authorized funding for the project, which was for 172 units, and the project is providing 199 units. Therefore, the city will receive additional affordable units. The 11th topic issue raised by the appell, appellant concerns the city's response to comments in the environmental impact report. Although staff inadvertently omitted the appellant's appeal point 10.1 from the staff report, this topic is related to the response to comments issue, and staff did provide a response to that in the staff report, and addressed the issues raised by the appellant. The city has complied with the California Environmental Quality Act, specifically Section 15088, that's included on this slide, which is the evaluation of and response to comments. As noted on this slide, pursuant to CEQA, the lead agency, which is the city, shall respond to comments raised in significant environmental issues received during the notice comment period. The city did provide a response to comments chapter in the final EIR, and acknowledged and responded to all comments received during the public review of the draft EIR. Furthermore, pursuant to CEQA Section 15204, specifically the highlighted text on this slide, CEQA does not require a lead agency to conduct every test or perform all research, study, and experimentation recommended or demanded by commenters. When responding to comments, lead agencies need only respond to significant environmental issues, and do not need to provide all information requested by reviewers, as long as good faith effort at full disclosure is made in the EIR. The city has demonstrated a good faith effort to respond to all comments received during the public review of the EIR, as well as well after the public review period closed. Therefore, the city has complied with CEQA. Pursuant to Section 4605(c) of the zoning ordinance, the city council may consider only the issues that were raised in the appeal filed with the city. The extensive analysis provided in the staff report clearly demonstrates that the appellant has not provided any sufficient basis to warrant overturning the Planning Commission's project approval and certification of EIR. Therefore, staff is recommending that the city council adopt a resolution upholding the Planning Commission's certification of the final EIR and associated mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and approval of the development plan, tentative parcel map, and density bonus to allow the construction of the Olive Park 100% affordable housing project located at the western terminus of Olive Drive. And that concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions. We also have, okay, remember? We also have staff from the Fire Department Engineering Division and Traffic Engineering Division, should you have any questions for us.
All right, thank you. This is just the presentation. All right, so this is an appeal, so we now are going to be hearing from the appellant. The appellant is Miracosta Neighbors for Responsible Development, and I believe that's Ms. Megley. All right, you, you may not have been present when I asked, instead of, yes, instead of clapping, which takes longer, and we also aren't able to focus on what everybody is saying, because we may not hear something, I'm asking you to please wave your hands. It's very visible if you like something, and then we can move and make sure we hear from everybody. So, Ms. Lay, you have up to 20 minutes to do a presentation. You can, if you wish, reserve some of that for rebuttal.
Okay, sounds good. Do I now have a presentation? Sorry.
So we're not, we're not counting this against you yet.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Alrighty. So, did my time start, or? Okay. Okay, so my name is Megley, and I'm representing my neighbors. I just want to say really quick that we're not against the project, but what we really want is just a secondary access going over the rail line. I have reached out to a couple organizations that have said that they would be willing to go and look at any development plans. I have different emails that I'm going to go and put on the table right here, so they can be.
Want to give her the mic, too?
Sorry. So, that is an email from North County Transit, saying that they'd be willing to look at any proposals for a level crossing. I know. Okay, I know that, so we're saying it isn't possible, but I don't believe any outreach was actually done to go and explore this option. And to my understanding, when an alternative is proposed, that the public did not get to comment on, and it actually reduces project impacts, we are allowed to go and recirculate the EIR, and I will get into that in a bit. So that is from North County Transit. Of course, they say it's okay. Here is from CPU as well. They said that the review process, the formal application process, takes about 18 months. And then here's also an email from U.S. Fish and Wildlife, or sorry, the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, saying that they are also welcome, they would like to look at plans. So, those are the three emails. Can we go back to the presentation? Sorry about that. So, the claim that it's infeasible is not true. It's just that staff did not do any proper outreach. To my understanding, the applicant reached out to the Real Estate Department at North County Transit, and I know that the commission chair for the Planning Commission reached out to a senior planner. I reached out to the CEO. I ended up getting a meeting with their chief of staff and chief operations officer, or development officer, and they said it was okay. So, to my understanding, this is an option worth exploring and pursuing, and here are some of the reasons why. So, there's just an image, just to see what we'd like to have happen. So, first of all, one of the big things that I know a lot of people are going to probably be talking about is the traffic that this project is going to add. We, the project applicant did a 24-hour study. I ended up requesting that video evidence. I obtained it, I uploaded it onto YouTube. It's available as a link through the appeal that you guys could all view. The traffic counts were off. Now, because of that, me and my mom ended up doing our own independent studies, that we recorded and cataloged, and all of that was also available through the appeal. Now, I know that the staff will say that, hey, that's not up to par, it's just opinion, it's anecdotal, but CEQA guideline actually defines substantial evidence as factors, reasonable facts, reasonable assumptions based on facts, or expert opinions supported by facts. So essentially, everything needs to be supported by facts, no matter whether it's a layperson or an expert. So, when you're talking to people, make sure that they're backing up their words with facts. Now, when we did our independent traffic studies, we don't have a lot of time, we're normal people, so we did six independent studies during peak hours, three in the, four in the morning, and three in the, for the evening. We averaged those differences between the EIR and the, and ours, and applied those percentage differences. So, as you can see, what we recorded for our studies, when we applied those percentage differences, came out to about like 150 less. So, we, and that's also what we kind of found with the traffic video studies. Now, then the next part is predicted traffic. They use the ITU manual. Now, the reason why we're saying that that is not acceptable is because even ITE recommends not using this particular study. And the reason why is because it lacks reliability metrics. So, even though they're applying this, the issue is, is that we don't really know for sure if that's what's actually going to result, trip-wise. And so, the IT recommends collecting local data, which Oceanside does not do, but then we had SandAG. And so, here's the issue, and I'm going to get to this in one second, but here is the SandAG trip generation guide that was used for this. So as you can see, it says caution, small sample size, right there in the middle. If you go up, it says number of studies, two. And then it has a no standard deviation rate, it also doesn't allow it to have a fitted curve, and it also doesn't have an R squared. All of those are reliability metrics. So we don't know what we're going to get, essentially. Now, this is something that you can find in both the VMT analysis and the LOS analysis, or appendix, sorry. But they say that the trip generation is based on the most current 11th edition of the ITU Trip Generation Manual versus SandAG. Now, why would they make that comparison? Clearly, SandAG was the operative standard at the time. But why was SandAG not used? Because supposedly, the ITE is superior. But if it's so superior, why does it come with a warning label? Now, here's where we kind of go and get in the weeds. The difference, this is where it makes all the difference, is that there's a threshold change. Now, when they do ITE, the average daily trip rate is 951. When SandAG is used, it's 1,194. Now, the reason why that matters is because I know that the TIS says that if it's over 1,000 trips, then it goes and has to do a VMT analysis. This project was not, did not have that requirement. They got exemption because it's near transit, it's a disposable housing, but it does not meet all the requirements, in my opinion, and this is why, though, is that when we look at the original proposal, they had 282 units, and then they offered 346 parking spaces. But now, since then, they've lowered the unit count and increased the parking, which has resulted in about two parking spaces per unit, which is pretty much average for the American household. Now, what that means is that, like, there's going to be increased car dependency. And then when you look at the other facts associated with this project, they're not incorporating transit passes into the rent. There has not been any pedestrian LOS analysis for the walkway from Olive Park to the Sprinter Station. There are no Class 3 bike lanes on our street to College Boulevard. And also, Oceanside is a jobs-poor city, and that means that anyone that lives in the city is likely to go and commute out, which means there's going to be increased travel. So for all of these things combined, I don't really think it should have gotten the exemption. And I know that that is something that we can review and discuss. Now, this is another thing that I think everyone's been very confused about, is the noise analysis is. So, I'm going to be showing something really quick up here. So, here is the predicted travel noise levels. People were assuming that, hey, like, this is what it is with ambient noise. But what happens is, is that they just got the trip, average daily trip rates for each segment of my neighborhood, and then decided, okay, well, this is how much sound energy is being generated from that many cars. So, as a result, this is what happens. This is like a visual representation. I have the sources right down there that shows you where I got this stuff. So, what they're saying is based on 233 average daily vehicle trips, that's going to generate about 45 DBA on my street. And then, like, we have it for this segment and all the other segments. Now, the issue with this is that it's isolating the noise to specific segments without actually showing how noise works. Noise radiates, okay? So this is an example. This is what was not factored into the EIR, is how the project noise and the ambient noise that is currently existing overlays on top of each other. Now... Can we go back to, thank you? So, according to my understanding of the EIR is that 65 DBA is the threshold limit for the city, for exterior noise limits in residential zones. Well, I ended up looking at the Oceanside General Plan Updates, and in there, it actually has this map, which shows the traffic noise contours from College Boulevard. If you zoomed in on that even more, you would see that a part of my neighborhood is in the 70 range, and another part of it is in the 65 range. But when they did the sound measurements for the EIR, they only did around the project boundaries, which of course, you can see is in the 60, so it was a lot lower. So it didn't get flagged as being above the threshold. That is something that the EIR did not cover, is whether or not this was going to go and impact ambient noise levels. So, the reason why I'm kind of fixated on this is because noise impacts public health. Here is one example that I mentioned in the appeal via link. So, as you can see, it says neighborhood noise may increase the risk of dementia. Just 10 decibels more daytime neighborhood noise is associated with 36 higher odds of mild cognitive impairment, and 90, oh, sorry, 30% higher odds of having Alzheimer's disease. So that's just one study, but there have been many, many more that essentially say, yo, like, noise is bad for health. So, try to keep it down. So, I put this in the EIR, and the response to it was basically like, hey, this study is only based on, like, near freeways, and where they have heavy traffic, et cetera, et cetera. Well, that's exactly fits the profile of my neighborhood. We live right next to a major road, which is college. So, the next point is that with the fire access road. So, if you go and look at the fire code, it is D106.1, essentially says that, hey, if this project has under 200 units and they're sprinkler, they can have one access road. But what happens is, is that nobody accounted for the 62 homes that already used that street. They were never factored. street, they were never factored into the collision. And so, to my understanding, uh, well, the fire code, chapter one, actually says that, hey, we're supposed to enforce, like, code to protect the life and safety. None of my neighbors feel safe with this. Like, we want the secondary access road, and we also think that the future tenants deserve it as well. Now, again, when you add the 199 units to the 62 existing homes, that's going to be 261 dwellings on a single access road. Our homes are not sprinklered, they don't have any of those fire mitigation measures, so adding all of those homes while they're going to say, hey, it improves the structural integrity or preserves the structure of the project, we're still at risk, and our, it's increasing our risk as a neighborhood. So that's another reason, like I said, why we want this. Now, what's curious is that in chapter five of the fire code, it actually says that the fire code official can require secondary access if there's even the potential for impairment. Doesn't have to be, you know, a for sure thing, just potential. Now, what happens is, is that there's four different things that apply. Vehicle congestion, terrain, climate, conditions, and other limiting factors. Vehicle congestion, check. We have a lot of congestion at the intersection of, uh, College Avenue, or, sorry, College Boulevard and Olive Avenue. We have the sleep stoves, we also are now in a high fire zone, and we have the other limiting factor, which is the existing homes. So, you know, we would really actually love it if the, uh, city could go and request an ICC interpretation pertaining to the situation, because, uh, we think that it is necessary, and since the Oceanside Fire Department does take a conservative approach, we think that they should be in agreement with that, um, to make sure that the code is being followed. So this is another example, we actually had a house fire in September, access was blocked for hours, nobody could get in or out. This was just one example of what could happen, and how access could get blocked, and why secondary access is something that we believe is needed. All it takes is just one traffic jam, one car crash, anything to block our road, and then not only is our neighborhood inaccessible, but the project would be inaccessible, and I don't think that that should be acceptable at all. So this is just an example of, uh, the current LOS levels. As you can see, College Boulevard is terrible, it's at failing grades. Now, if we go and redirect the traffic to go and connect with Oceanside and Avenida de Oro, that LOS level is grade A, you know, it's great. So essentially, all we're wanting to do is just have this EIR recirculated to go and evaluate the secondary access road. We want this built, but we just want the second access. And because North County Transit did say that they're okay with it, we think that this is something worth pursuing and looking into. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, at this time, um, so you have 4 minutes 32 seconds, rebuttal time left, if you wish to do rebuttal. All right, so now, we, um, are at the applicant. So the applicant has up to 20 minutes to address, um, even address the comments by the appellant. The, the points that were raised. Up to 20 minutes, uh, but you do not get to reserve any rebuttal. How many people have signed up to speak on this item?
We have 22 speakers and two groups.
Okay.
My name is Brian McHale of Capstone Equities, and we're a Southern California developer of affordable and workforce housing. And we are very excited to be here tonight, it's been three long years of work, and, uh, we believe that the RDA is the best version of this project that we've seen it over the last three years. Ultimately, I think Shannon touched on a lot of things tonight, so I'm trying not to duplicate, uh, many of her comments, and we'll focus on some of the things that the appellant raised. Ultimately, here, the site's density allows for a much higher density than we have, the original project was below that density, and the new project, the RDA, is well below the allowable zoning as well. Now, with regards to location of the site, uh, we have, as Shannon mentioned, direct connection to the Sustainable Corridors Plan as well as the SBOA. And from regard, with regards to the housing element, ultimately, with the types of households that we'll be serving in Oceanside, uh, ultimately, the very low to moderate income households and demands have not been met, uh, and there, we are about 50% through the cycle as of last week, and they have been met less than 16%, with the very low and low being less than 10% met. Shannon touched on the veg map, we're impacting the least environmentally sensitive habitat on site, and the conservation easement, as you see there, uh, will allow for over 19 acres of coastal sage scrub and almost 33 acres of sensitive habitat to be preserved in perpetuity. Now, we're incredibly honored that Preserve Calavera and the Sierra Club, uh, for the first time in decades, have issued a formal support letter for a project. We've been working in coordination with them over the last several months, uh, ever since Diane attended our first scoping meeting. And ultimately, there are many sustainability elements of this project, in addition to, uh, 100% electric project and the TDM program, uh, which, as our understanding, is that we'd be the first residential project in Oceanside to have such a program. With regards to community benefits, there's several, given that it's 100% affordable housing, but I think the critical one here is with regards to the city's, uh, incredibly limited subsidy for affordable housing. Originally, in our NOF application for phase one of the project, it was 172 units, the city will now get 199 units for the same subsidy, and that leveraging increased from 21 times to 27 times. Beyond that, the project will be built with prevailing wage or high-paying construction jobs as well. Now, this is a critical slide. It's been a decade since the city of Oceanside has had affordable housing built for families, and a lot of that has to do with the federal government's maps for high resource areas and scoring, uh, in proximity to services, amenities, and transit. As you can see here, these are the only locations in yellow in the city that are high resource and in, within a half a mile distance of transit. So ultimately, this housing, there's different types of affordable housing in the state of California, but this type is for working families, and they serve the individuals of the, in the community who are serving the community, but ultimately are getting priced out of the community in which they're serving. Now, there's a few examples of that here on the slide, but they also include Oceanside specific service-based industries and otherwise. With regards to community outreach, we recognize that this was a complicated site, and being affordable housing developers, it's rare for us to have incredibly well-located land that we can pay high prices for, so complicated sites tend to have a lower value in land. And ultimately, we wanted to go beyond the minimum requirements that the city has for community outreach. With that in mind, we've now met with over 50 community members, consisted of 30-plus meetings, over 10 phone calls, and have individually reached out and followed up with individuals in the adjacent neighborhood, of which 13 of the 31 I met with individually. Now, throughout the process, we have received, uh, plenty of comments, as I know you all have as well, and those comments have been filtered, every email, voicemail, phone call, you name it, letter, postcard, we've got it all, and we have taken everyone into account, not only for those in the community that are the loudest, who have made the most comments, but every single thing has been taken into account and prioritized at the time in which we're making design decisions for the project. And we did our best to try and attempt to address as many of these concerns as possible. With that being said, when making those design decisions, we ultimately had to make sure the project was still financially feasible. With that, the biggest concern, as the appellant raised, was traffic, and density being a high correlation to that. So ultimately, we reduced the density by 30%, allowing for the project be built in one phase. And additionally, although the appellant is now telling us that, um, unfortunately, providing more parking spaces is bad, we heard from many of the community members that more parking would be welcome for a target of two per unit, and we're just below that at 1.92 per unit, and ultimately, we reduced the height and qualifications as well. The, this is a site plan showing some of the amenities of the project, in addition to the publicly accessible Sprinter connection, and ultimately, for our future residents onsite, we'll be, uh, providing, uh, community services and after-school programs and adult education services as well onsite by our local nonprofit who provides it in-house, based locally here in North County San Diego. Here is a bit more detail to the public connection, available both to our residents and the members of the adjacent community, an aerial from the northeast here, as well as the project view from Olive Drive that Shannon touched on. Now, getting into the appeal, ultimately, uh, it was a lengthy appeal, we're trying to acknowledge everything, I think ultimately, our technical memo, the staff report, and the response to comments in the EIR addressed many of them, but I think tonight, we'd like to focus and do a deeper dive on a few things, not to get too technical, but ultimately, to address the appellant's concerns. First, traffic. Baseline traffic counts, as the appellant mentioned, there was a concern there of, you know, how the studies were done. Ultimately, the real concern that we have is that in reviewing the appellant's data, the 412 trips that were adjusted based on the visual inspections that were done on Olive Drive, the appeal, uh, has a high deviation in terms of trip rates per home from widely accepted ITU rates. So as you can see, there's nearly a 40 to 50% delta, while our baseline traffic is nearly identical with a small deviation from ITU's generally accepted guideline. Next, from a traffic generation standpoint, ultimately, we believe that the appeal lacks merit. First, Sandag, their trip rates are no longer even posted on their website, that's number one. Second, from ITU, we believe that ITU meets the characteristics of the project in a far better way than does Sandag or any other, uh, type of traffic generation data. Ultimately, yes, the ADT trip generation data had two data points, but ITU does not require you to ultimately go and collect local data, instead, they have a process that's required to be followed in the event that there is one to two data points. That process was followed. Ultimately, we had two data points for mid-rise close to transit, this is category 221, four to 10 floors with an average rate of 4.75. Ultimately, the independent variable that was used was an additional nine data points from the low-rise close to transit with a very similar rate of ADT, but that similar rate is not where it stops. You need to do a statistical correlation to understand if the additional data points are worthwhile in using. As you can see, that correlation is .93. Now, when adding our two data points to those nine, you get a total of 11, and you can see that those two data points actually fall on the exact average rate line with an even higher correlation of .94. Ultimately, our project is on the lower end of the scale in terms of size, and as you can see, the RDA at 199, and the original project, which is analyzed at 290, ultimately, the more conservative line to use is the average rate line, thus preferring us back to that 4.75, uh, average that was used for the mid-rise category to be more conservative. Next, from a cumulative traffic standpoint, uh, ultimately, the, uh, Shannon covered this in depth, as well as, uh, from a bike and safety standpoint, but ultimately, the Sprinter connection to the station will increase the city's infrastructure of bike, uh, access. Next, fire, secondary access road. Again, Shannon did a great job of explaining this, ultimately, uh, the state of California does not adopt Appendix D of the California Fire Code, although the city of Oceanside does, as do certain jurisdictions. From our understanding and through conversations with the OFD, they have confirmed that that is done in order to clearly delineate the requirements of any project based on their characteristics, and since the beginning of this, ever since before our first developers' conference meeting three years ago, every conversation and every redesign decision has been done in coordination with OFD. Next, the fire risk maps. The appeal ultimately originally asked us to delay the hearing this evening for the updated maps to come out. We complied with that request, the maps have come out, we are not in a very high fire zone. Evacuation study, again, ties to the very high fire zone requirement, as Shannon touched on. And something came up this week with regards to the future fire station, we'd just like to acknowledge that as well, although it was not part of the appeal. Ultimately, within the city's goals of five-minute response time, both sites, whether it's .8 miles away with the current station or 1.4 miles away with the new station, both can be met within the five-minute response time goal. Site access. Of course, given the neighborhood's concerns from the beginning, and anticipating those concerns, we looked at access, although, I'd like to be clear, there is no justification, CEQA guidelines or state guidelines or otherwise, that required us to look at these alternative accesses. So with that being said, Olive Drive, since the original map that was recorded for the College Park Estates Number Eight, has designated Olive Drive as illegal access for the project site. Ultimately, you can see that here, and as you can see in Lot A, that has clearly been delineated on the, uh, site and was recorded after the original map that was recorded, thereby justifying that the roads that were accepted by the city at that time granted our project site access to Olive Drive. Next, with regards to site access, Olive Drive has the capacity. Olive Drive, if you look in the bottom there, uh, per the circulation element adopted by the city, is a collector road. Collector roads have capacity of 9,000 ADT. In order to be conservative, and in coordination with city staff, we analyzed that road at 2,200 ADT, and as you can see in the bend in Olive, it goes all the way to the project site. With that in mind, you can see the 2,200 ADT line in red at the top, the original project was below that threshold, and the new project, the RDA, is 30% reduction, further reducing, uh, the number of trips generated. At the same time, with regards to alternative access, Shannon touched on it, but south, we can't build a tunnel under homes, west, we have a softline preserve and have minimal impact, uh, that we can make there with the sensitive habitat in the creek, and north, of course, the city cannot force eminent domain on private landowners, nor can we impact NCTD's operation, and there's a creek there as well that would require a bridge, but we certainly looked at that, and for a question and answer, we can get into that more as well. Next is noise. This was addressed in our technical memo and otherwise, so I would leave that to the staff report as well to address that. Ultimately, the baseline traffic noise, 5 DBA increase is not a significant impact, but I think it's important here because with the noise study, the projected noise levels are 55 DBA. 55 is 10 DBA below 65 DBA. And 55 seems real close to 65, but when you speak to noise engineers, they've actually educated me, that that 10 DBA difference essentially reflects half as loud. So additionally, when analyzing ambient noise levels that exist already near the project site, you'll see that over 24 average, the increase from the project is less than half a decibel imperceptible by noise engineering standards, and 3 dB during the quietest hour, which is barely perceptible, and then on top of that, the RDA reduces that noise by 30%. Construction traffic noise, once again, we used, uh, 54 DBA, which was modeled, not something that's assumed, these were modeled numbers that were plugged in to the modeling from the noise engineers, and ultimately, it's greater than 10 DBA lower, so less than half. The daycare facility, ultimately, sound travels, and when sound has to travel 65 to 70 feet further, that noise level is lower than it would be with the nearest sensitive receptor, which is the adjacent home. We, once again, as the development has analyzed, we are below those modeled thresholds that are required. The significant threshold, once again, conflates the two, operational and transportation. Transportation is over 24 hour, 24-hour average, operational is over a one-hour average, and it's important not to conflate the two, and each have different standards in the noise, in the city's adopted noise element for a reason, and in the municipal code as well, for other reasons. So we need to be clear when comparing the noise level. Geo-technical analysis, again, staff report handles this in depth, as do the EIR responsible comments, but we wanted to address this. Our stop stability studies were done in coordination with the city, reviewed by staff, and meet all factor of safety requirements, not only in the static condition of a 1.5, but also at 1.1 seismic, so the vibration mechanism of installing the shear pins, there are low vibr, low vibration methods that are required for drilling, they're not pile driving or anything else, but the vibration coming from an earthquake was also analyzed, and the factor of safety meets those requirements. Affordability, ultimately, we touched on this, we- We comply with state density bonus law requirements. The RDA is providing the city more benefit as well from an affordability standpoint, more units, 20 more, 27 more units faster, and ultimately, affordability is not a CEQA issue. Finally, the response to comments, Shannon mentioned this as well, so I'd like to conclude. I recognize, and the entire team recognizes, I'm the one speaking here, but there's been a lot of effort from a lot of people, including city staff, to get to this point. We recognize that this project may be an inconvenience for the 62 homes in that neighborhood, the 23 homes on Olive Drive, and I understand that change in this neighborhood could be a concern. When we developed this project, and I've said it from the first scoping meeting we ever had, we have developed this project with the needs and wants of the community in mind, and that is why we went to great lengths to redesign the entire project and do a fourth planning application supplemental. Ultimately, there are wants that the community has, and we've tried to address all of them. At the same time, there are needs of the greater Oceanside community done by our voluntary community outreach. I think the needs unfortunately are dire, and in the three years we've been working on this, those needs have not gone away, and they've only gotten worse because, again, in the last decade, no affordable housing has been built for families in Oceanside. And the city has limited land available to do this in a high resource area in order for the project to score competitive. So ultimately, we tried to look back at the original maps we could find from 1986 of the city's original general plan. In looking at that land use map in 1986, for a moment, this is about 40 years ago, the city's going through the process of updating that general plan now. Let's take a moment and step back and think about where we were in 1986. Certain city council members were civil engineers, certain ones were fire captains. Our honorable mayor here was a recent law school graduate who had just passed the California bar. Ultimately, those council members back then, in the mid-'80s, could have never imagined the exponential growth that this city has had over the last 40 years. So with that in mind, I would imagine that that city council would have only envisioned and wished for a site like this on the Sprinter line to be 100% affordable housing. So with that, we would really appreciate if the appeal would not be accepted and the city council would consider upholding Planning Commission's unanimous approval of the project. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we're going to go ahead and go to the public. And you said 30, excuse me, you said...
We have...
35?
We have 21.
22 speakers.
One asked that their name be removed. So we're down to 21 speakers and two groups.
All right, so...
How many minutes?
Two minutes. This is a public hearing. We have, at this point, 21 people have signed up. This is a public hearing where you do not actually have to sign up to speak. So after we run through the 21 speakers and two groups, the groups are organized presentations, so each one of those will be 10 minutes. So we're looking at 20, 60, about, huh? Hour and a half. Thank you for thinking, for running through those numbers, Peter. I was going to say an hour, over an hour, but yeah. All right, so we'll first go through those that signed up, and then we will ask if anybody else wishes to speak. All right, you want to go ahead and get started?
Okay. We do have two podiums, says your name is called, or if you see your name up on the screen, please start making your way down.
Where do you live? Excuse me? Where do you live?
Where do I live?
Yeah, do you live in the city of Oceanside?
I don't.
Okay.
Does it matter?
No, I just wondered because I've never seen you before and...
You've never seen me before?
No.
Aren't you at Sandag?
I didn't see you there.
You haven't? Interesting.
All right. All right, well, I'll see you on Friday. Adra, followed by Larry Warner, followed by Jimmy Knott, followed by Diane Nygaard. Two minutes.
So the road to hell is paved with good intentions, and I'm wondering how many people really understand what's going on with this, because all of your density stuff that you wanted to do is a 15-minute city plan. I mean, you're sitting here and you're tracking and tracing people's movements, because the idea, as you know, with Sandag, is to get us out of our cars and have us walk and bike everywhere, or take public transit. And so they're using that to demonize driving, to put people into a place where everything is accessible, which sounds nice if that's because you wanted to provide different things for the people, but in reality, it is to enslave the people. And we're paying to have that happen. There's a road usage charge coming down the pipe from the state. Even Sandag wanted to implement one to control the movements of the people. And when you're using vehicle miles traveled, it's already been deemed that that's not even a useful data point to use. And it's just interesting because it's like, if you wanted to really, you know, have the air quality be better, is it better to have people more spread out or condensed? Because if you filled this room with a bunch of people, would the air quality be better or worse? It would be worse. And it's funny, because CO2 is something, you know, that is being demonized, but it's actually like a building block of life. It actually helps plants grow bigger. I mean, they use it in greenhouses and different things, but these are things that are being attacked. And, you know, it's like, in other countries, like in Europe, they're doing, where you can't even leave your 15-minute city, you actually have to have a permit to leave. And I don't think a lot of people really understand what's really happening. And if they did, they wouldn't be in support of this, because it actually impedes your ability to provide housing. When you're sitting here more talking about that it's environmentally superior, shouldn't it be that we're more concerned about putting people in a home than protecting the environment that you're never going to save? Because what's happening is it's a man-made thing, but it's weaponized warfare.
Thank you very much. Larry Warner, followed by Jimmy Knott, followed by Diane Nygaard.
All right, I'm Larry Warner, live in Oceanside. I request you vote yes on the proposed construction of the 199 unit on 100%. Affordable housing located at the end of Olive Drive. It is painfully clear we need affordable housing, and this project is ideally situated in the smart corridor, corridor near public transportation. As Oceanside proactively works to help reduce the number of people living in their cars or on the street, projects like this one need to be approved. A project like this helps keep people from becoming unhoused, thus helping stop the flow of people into homelessness. Our Oceanside Sanctuary Church Justice Works team is deeply concerned about the impact of rent burden on our friends and neighbors who earn less than the median income. We meet with families who are juggling jobs and bills and rely on our church's food pantry to feed their children, make ends meet, and indeed of low income and in need of low income and affordable places to live. The project, if approved, will significantly contribute to addressing the need for more low-income housing in Oceanside. Please vote on behalf of those who work and live in our city, those who are struggling to stay in Oceanside, to stay housed. Please vote to approve this project.
Thank you. Jimmy Knott, followed by Diane Nygaard, followed by Janelle Coker.
Mayor, council members, Jimmy Knott, 127, Sherri Lane. I appreciate staff and also the developer trying to do something, but words have meaning and very simply, there's dreams and then there's reality. We have to look at this, it's low, they said it's low-income moderate. Those are specific terms, and they're defined. Can a senior on minimum Social Security move in? With the threats underneath with the current administration to dismantle Section 8, can anyone afford it? Unless the city has a subsidy program? I doubt it. So what happens is, we are sat here without question, what's going to be going on? We have to really look at it. I like what staff has presented in clarifying permeability of soil and a lot of other things, but we have to look at the common sense of things. Stoplight wait periods, that's what the public looks at. Not all this data back and forth. They look at consolidated usage, you know, the flow dynamics. And also with fires, how many homes in the Pacific Palisades were in a high fire level? How many fire stations were destroyed, living next door to homes that were destroyed because of weather conditions? We have to stop and look at common sense. This does not take and look at common sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms., please remember this. Great, thank you. Diane Nygaard, followed by Janelle Coker, followed by Amber Kay.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council, Diane Nygaard, representing Preserve Calavera. There's lots to like about this project. You all know how hard our community struggles to meet our affordable housing goal, and here we have 199 affordable housing units, 100% affordable project. You can only imagine how hard we work for how many years to preserve sensitive habitat. This project is setting aside 75% of the parcel, permanently protected habitat. But these neighbors' concerns about traffic are very real. The section of college is already at LOSF. At the Planning Commission, the commissioners acknowledged, well, gosh, if we've got a segment that's already at F and we're adding more trips to it, we're just making it a bigger F. But they did nothing to fix that. Our city's policies require no, the developers to do nothing to mitigate the impacts of adding trips to failing roadways, but these neighbors in this community deserve better than that. Shannon reviewed TDM provisions that the developer has agreed to and staff has recommended. Those go a long ways towards addressing those concerns. So tonight, we ask you to do two things. Approve that condition of approval, creating the first TDM plan for residential development in this city, and second, direct staff to change our policies so we don't keep adding more trips to failing roads and not require corrective action. Real transportation choices, subsidizing transit, bicycle, pedestrian improvements. Make our smart growth corridors real. Do those two things, and the entire community will benefit. Thank you.
Thank you. Janelle Coker, followed by Amber Kay.
Hello, my name is Pastor Janelle Coker, and I am the pastor at the Oceanside Sanctuary. I've told this council before that we have a food pantry that gives away roughly 7,000 to 9,000 pounds of food a month. We have hundreds of Oceanside residents who are hanging on by a thread. They cannot afford their increasing rent. They're, they are post office workers, they are college graduates, they are people with, kids with disabilities, and their rents are going up, and they have been on the list for affordable housing for years. We ask that you please consider this project and say yes to this. We've been going on, they've done their due diligence, and make sure that we can have an Oceanside that is full of all types of people, all types of residents, not just the older folks that got in before the big housing bubble, like I did, or those that are very wealthy and can afford to rent and to purchase houses. Please, let's have a diverse Oceanside. That's what we've always had here. I've been a longtime resident, and I ask that you please, all of you, please vote yes for this and for future projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Amber Kay, followed by Zoe Erickson, followed by Barbara Collins.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council Members. I sympathize with the members of our community and their realistic concerns about the project impacting their quality of life and the roads that we just can't afford to fix period around the city and adding extra impact into negatively cared-for spaces already. But while the Road to Olive Park community has always been slated to lead to something different, I can also understand having a little piece of paradise on a de facto cul-de-sac and it's suddenly being turned into a major roadway for hundreds of families to come in and out, and what that does to quality of life and impact in a neighborhood. And I don't blame neighbors for appealing or being upset for those things coming forward. I actually blame decades of complacent leadership at the council level that has chosen to overlook the needs of our most vulnerable members of our community and the desperate need for missing middle housing for our working and middle-class families. The community should have been built back in 2005, not in 2025. The 20-year pause in building affordable housing has leded to a crisis for all sides. I'm here tonight in support of the Olive Park project. As a former resident of low-income housing for over 13 years, I know firsthand the stability it can create for students, young families, disabled veterans, seniors, and others. Every one of these demographics was my neighbor as a resident at Old Gorb Apartments. But one thing that this complex has that we didn't have was direct access to Sprinter Line. Oceanside continues to develop hospitality industry, and the cheapest room at the Seabird Hotel tonight is $357, and it'll cost you $678 for an oceanfront suite. A job recently posted for the hotel, $23 an hour for a food and beverage supervisor, minimum wage for bartenders and pool attendees, between $20 to $23 an hour for housekeeping and front desk workers. The supervisor is making roughly $58K for full-time work a year. We've heard that Oceanside costs over $192,000, so we need this for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Zoe Erickson, followed by Barbara Collins, followed by Brianna.
Good evening. I'm Zoe Erickson. I've lived on Olive Drive for 40 years. I want to point out that there is 38, or it doesn't matter, 33 acres beyond that that are highly flammable. And I've lived there, like I said, for 40 years, and I've seen some big fires there, one that swept up and, and they had to evacuate up on Rooster. Only because Cal Fire came in, did they, were they able to stop it that day? Section 30503 dot 1 dot 2 of the 2022 CFC commentary gives the fire department authority to require a second entrance. I asked my brother-in-law, he was a retired Oceanside fire chief, and he was also a senior fire inspector, to send you all an email why he thought that there should be a second access, and I won't go through that. Hopefully, you've read it. One of the things I'd like to point out is, yes, there are 282 parking spaces there. That's 1.9 for unit, but you've got 40% of those REV, and it is unlawful to park in that unless you're charging your vehicle. So it's less than 1.9. Where are all those cars going to park? And are they going to be hindrance for the fire trucks? And like Meg was able to show you, you have all these fire engines and other first responders clogging up the street. None of my neighbors, who were a lot senior citizen, had to walk in from college to get into Olive because it was totally blocked off. I really would hope that the council would turn this back and to the city count, to the city planning, and see if there is another access. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Barbara Collins, followed by Brianna, followed by Shannon Narzum.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Sanchez and council members. I am here on behalf of the Sierra Club tonight to voice strong support for the Olive Park Apartments. This project has an impressive number of features that we need in residential development in Oceanside, and it sets new standards for the kind of environmentally responsible, community-serving housing that Oceanside urgently needs. We encourage the city council to approve this project. I've been coming here and making comments for the Sierra Club for several years, saying that we need smart growth. This is a smart growth project in spades, and not only is it next to the Sprinter, there's four bus stops within one-half mile of the project as well. It's located close to all kinds of services, employers, and shopping centers. It's a rare opportunity to deliver 100% affordable housing. The vast majority of the proposed housing projects that are in the pipeline and proposed are market rate. That is not going to serve our workforce families in Oceanside. We need this project. It will address one of our most urgent community needs, and the Sierra Club supports equitable access to housing across all income levels in our community. It's got several other outstanding, above-code features. This is a great transportation demand management plan that the developer has agreed to implement and... and all-electric construction, habitat preservation. We urge you to approve this project, and I thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Brianna, followed by Shannon Narisim, followed by Tom Knudsen.
Hi, Ms. Brianna.
Can you speak into the mic?
Hi.
Thank you.
My name is Brianna. A little bit about myself, I'm a mother of four, and I'm a manager at Albertson's across the street from the Olive Project. I have been at that location for 11 years. I'm the new store for that location. I also homeschool my younger children. Despite my other half and myself working 40-plus hours a week, it's still a struggle to survive. I'm in favor of the project. I feel it would increase the sense of community. It would help decrease the homeless population. The low-income population has a hard time affording transportation. Having it next to the Sprinter station would greatly increase the productivity of that location. Throughout that time, on several occasions, there has been fires in the encampments at that location. I believe that having occupants of that location, it would decrease the dangers. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Knudsen. How about Cheryl Rowe, followed by Sarita Clark?
My name is Cheryl Rowe, and I live on 4026 Olive Drive for 38 years. We understand the state's mandate for more affordable housing. We're not against it, but our priority is the health and safety of our community, especially on what's been proposed on Olive Drive. The Olive Park Apartments project would add 199 units at a dead-end street on Olive Drive and no other access. Common sense, we know that's going to increase traffic, and we've already experienced firsthand our neighborhood of fires, that fire trucks can't get down the street, and even, oh, wow, that's fast. It's a bottleneck today, and once the project is added, it will give it worse. And so we're asking for another access out of our development, and it will solve so many problems, so many issues in our neighborhood, and it's a win-win for everyone. So we would like to ask the council to reconsider and go and look at an EIR and fully evaluate the second access before moving this project forward. Because even though the developer claimed to have looked into going across the North County Transit District rail line, no such plans were submitted to North County Transit District. Our neighbor Meg Lay.
Thank you. Thank you. Sarita Clark, followed by Brenda Miller.
Okay, you read it correctly. Thank you. Thank you, members of the council. It's great that we're seeing this opportunity here in the community for people to voice their concerns. We are not opposed to the project. Please let us make that clear. What the concern is, is the access road. First of all, I don't know if you've seen many of the volume on the Sprinter Line. There's not many people that ride that Sprinter Line. And, you know, also, another big concern is the average income in Oceanside is $93,974. You multiply 80% of that, that is $75,179. I don't know how that qualifies as low income. And that's going to hurt our seniors, because many of our seniors live on a very fixed income and/or other individuals. So I don't know how that's going to qualify for that. The other issues that we have are concerning is some of the data that was provided through the materials that were listed, either through the staff or through the developer. Some of the data was skewed. If you go and live on our streets, you will see there is a huge amount of traffic, and this is just going to escalate it. So it's just important that we take a look and another consideration of another access road, and there is opportunity there. We can build a bridge. Forget the frickin' frog. We can build it. Thank you.
Thank you. Brenda Miller? Is there Brenda Miller?
I'm here. I'm from here. Most of the group, and I cited a girl.
Okay. All right. So we're coming upon a group presentation. So should we call that group?
Just Carrie.
You've got Carol Lay Group.
I know, but Kathy Bronzy's up next.
Okay, Kathy Bronzy? Did you want to speak for two minutes?
I'll take it.
You're not part of the group then, right? Okay.
Hi, respectfully to all that are here, thank you for having us. You know, senior planner decided, went through her presentation very quickly, skipped over an item that was a sub-bullet, number one, that indicated we have to be careful of the health and safety of the Oceanside residents. She didn't read it. Then she also skipped over item number eight in its entirety. So I'm not sure if everybody heard everything they need to about this. I just wanted to bring that to attention. I also like to remind everyone that our Mayor Sanchez and Deputy Mayor Heim already denied this approval because there are other lower-income housings being built all over, all over. Also, I'd like to bring to attention, the maps that are being looked at are from the year 1880, and we were at that time San Bernardino County. So 1880, things haven't changed. I don't know about that. I'm very concerned that there's a waiver regarding slope stability. The slope is so deep and so much, it's going to cause an earthquake itself. Also, don't fool yourself about this conservatorship in perpetuity. You don't think for a minute that the people, places, and things are just going to migrate over there. Who's going to take care of it? Who is going to be responsible for it? Streetlights were mentioned in DUDEX's proposal, but never mentioned where, how many, what. So that's an outstanding order. Cement canals, they're saying that this is, the developer's saying this is their property. Well, these cement canals run through the South Side properties, through our backyards, down there. Who's going to mitigate that? What's going to happen with that? The ADA ramp going down, the slope is like this, from where they're indicating they want it to go. Also, the voters that we have submitted, I have many more, of when they're already trying to come in to build this project, there's no way. They're swearing at each other. How can we do this? Why are we here? And it's not working. So thank you for your time, everyone.
Thank you. So Carol Lay, so you have an organized presentation, correct?
A what?
You have a group.
I guess, yeah.
All right, real quick, when I'm in the middle of something, please do not disturb the city clerk. Mrs. Lay?
Yes.
You're part of a group, correct?
Oh, is that what that means?
Yeah.
Okay.
So are the following people here? Are you part of this group or no?
Yes.
Okay, I think that's what the confusion is right now, is who is part of what group?
All right. So being a part of a group means that you have, you'll be speaking for 10 minutes.
I'm so sorry.
And that you have three other people that have agreed to give up their time, and the city clerk is going to be calling out their names, and they're going to be standing up, and they're going to agree to stay for the entire 10-minute presentation you're going to give. So.
So we have Carol Lay. Shannon Naris, are you here? Shannon Naris? Are you here?
I'm there.
And then Dan Kirk? Is Dan Kirk in the audience?
He might be outside.
And Stacy Kirk?
They have to be in here.
Yeah, so if they're outside, please come on in.
That's Shannon Naris, Dan Kirk, and Stacy Kirk.
Oh. And then we also have another group after this group.
Right. So if, you have to have everybody present.
We could move on to the next group.
We can move on to the next group, but, you know, you don't have to have those people. You can have.
I've got a, I've got a two-minute speech. Can I do that or no? Tell me what I should do.
Okay, why don't you have a seat and have a conversation to see whether you want to do a two-minute speech or you want to do a 10-minute presentation. She would have to have three other people who will not be speaking.
Some of my neighbors signed up to give their time to other neighbors.
That's not how it works.
They didn't realize that they need to add group to their name when they signed on to the kiosk, so things got kind of turned around.
That's okay. You just need to get three other people.
Okay.
Who will not be speaking for two minutes.
Because I think with some of these, the four that are there, I think they were trying to give their time to other people.
That's okay. Just when she comes up, just give the three other names.
Okay.
All right? Okay, so now we're on to the next group.
So while you're finding three other names, we'll move on to the next group. Alec Erickson, are you here?
I'm here.
And is Brenda Miller here? Brenda Miller? Kent Frank?
Brenda Miller spoke.
Oh, she didn't speak. She said she was part of the group.
Oh, that's right. That's right.
Yeah. Kent Frank? Is Kent Frank in the audience tonight? Leslie Little?
I'm right here.
So we're missing Kent Frank.
All right, why don't we go, see, you just have to have three other people. It doesn't have to be the people who signed up for it.
And we do have other speakers on the list.
So why don't you organize your, organize presentations, and we'll just continue with the two-minute speeches, and then when we go through those, you can then do your presentations. All right? So we have two presentations, group presentations. One is under Carol Lay, the other one is under Alec Erickson.
And so our next two speakers are Kevin Reed, to be followed by Ron Dwyer-Voss.
Kevin Reed, two minutes. Ron Dwyer-Voss, two minutes.
My last. You're mine. All right.
Kevin Reed.
Yes. Evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name's Kevin Reed.
Whisper. Thank you. Go ahead.
I lived in the neighborhood near the Olive Park Apartments for over 40 years, and I also served on the bicycle and pedestrian community of Oceanside. I'm here to express serious concerns about traffic and safety, especially in the intersection of College Boulevard and Olive. According to Oceanside's May 2024 transportation study, the intersection is a major arterial road with a level of service rated an F. As of June of 2021, it was clearly, it was carrying, already carrying 50,000 vehicles daily, 10,000 over to sign capacity. This failing level of service affects all of us and delays emergency response times where minutes can be critical. During peak hours, northbound College backs up past Under Drive and westbound Olive and stretch past Emerald. With cars creeping downward through Oceanside Boulevard, it's a well-known bottleneck, and adding traffic from the Olive Park Apartments will only make matters worse. So I respectfully propose three solutions, I'm sorry, two solutions. First one is adding another access road to North Avenue and Del Oro to reduce congestion on College Boulevard. Second, with the connection to transit, we need to install bicycle sharos and traffic calming features on Olive and west of College. With more cyclists expected from the transit connection, we need to ensure their safety by, on this curvy road. Since the road curves, it's very hard to see a straight line where cyclists may be at. I'm not opposed to housing, but growth must be responsible and planned for our current infrastructure and community safety in mind. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ron Dwyer-Voss, followed by Chanel Boyer, followed by Beth Barnum.
I'm Ron Dwyer-Voss. I'm a resident of downtown Oceanside, a member of the Housing Commission, and a member of Oceanside Sanctuary Church Justice Works Group. I want to remind the council that this project was part of the projects that we put forward to you as recommended for inclusionary housing funding from the in-lu fees. We liked the project. We liked that it brought 199 units of affordable housing to a situation where we're way behind on our RHNA goals. Currently, there is one two-bedroom, one-bath unit affordable to a family of four, making 80% of AMI in Oceanside today. So I don't need to repeat the crisis we're into you. Traffic issues are hard. We would all love to have access to beaches and the pier and wonderful cultural events and actively used parks and good restaurants and entertainment venues with no traffic. We would love for you to add amenities, housing, and jobs to our city without adding traffic. Hopefully someday, we'll have transit and bike lanes that will make that all possible, but right now, that's not. And until then, traffic-neutral options aren't available. Beyond the technical requirements and the constraints of state law, your choice today is moral. There are parents who are going without food so they can feed their children with the money they have left because they're paying $3,000 and $4,000 a month for one-bedroom, 600-square-foot units in Oceanside. I think the traffic waits at the light for five or 10 extra minutes are okay. Not convenient, not easy, but okay if it means that we can provide 199 more units of housing to people in Oceanside.
Thank you. Chanel?
So we made a mistake because it was confusing. I'm actually a part of a group, and I'm switching with someone we accidentally wrote group on, or it's me that's talking. So I have three people here that can stand up.
Okay, so you are going to be speaking for 10 minutes?
Yes.
Okay, so three people, stand up and give your name.
Kathy, I'm Cheryl.
Alec Erickson.
I'm Leslie Little.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Stay in the group.
Okay. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Chanel Boyer. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of many in the community who are raising serious concerns about the safety, feasibility, and long-term impacts of this project. I want to focus on just one of our concerns, emergency response times, specifically whether first responders can reach this project site within the city's own five-minute EMS response standard. Here are the facts. The final EIR evaluates emergency access based on temporary Fire Station 8, located at 1935 Avenida Del Oro. But we know that the permanent Station 8 at 1282 Rocky Point Drive already has an approved development plan and is expected to serve this area for the next 75 years. Under SUCA Guidelines 15125A, the EIR is required to evaluate environmental impacts using baseline conditions that are either current or reasonably foreseeable. A fire station with a fully approved development plan that is expected to serve the project site for 75 years is absolutely a future condition that should have been considered. So why didn't the EIR model the, model the emergency access from that location? We don't have the same tools the Oceanside Fire Department uses, but using publicly-available travel time data under PM peak traffic conditions, it takes between six and 10 minutes to travel between those two locations because of various failing LOS road segments between the permanent fire station and the project site. That exceeds the city's adopted goal of a five-minute EMS response time.
Do you want to give her the mic?
So here's a snapshot during PM traffic, peak traffic time. It takes seven minutes from the 1282 Rocky Point Drive, which exceeds the five-minute goal. Now, staff may argue that this doesn't matter because the city uses Opticom to help first responders bypass traffic lights, but the problem is, no one has modeled it. No analysis has been done to confirm whether first responders from the permanent station can actually make it to the site within five minutes under real-world conditions. Under SUCA Guidelines 15064D, the city is required to consider reasonably foreseeable indirect impacts, like delayed emergency medical services due to peak hour traffic. And per SUCA F15088.5, if new information shows a significant effect not previously disclosed, then the EIR must be recirculated before certification. And this just happens to be one of several issues that we're raising right now. This isn't just a planning issue, it's a life-safety issue. This isn't just a planning issue. It's a life-safety issue. Oceanside Fire Department has publicly stated its goal is to maintain EMS response times under five minutes. And while that goal may not be in the municipal code, delayed EMS response is one of the most common factors contributing to preventable deaths in suburban areas. So let me be clear. We are not saying this project has to be denied. We're not saying Opticom doesn't work. We're simply saying that the city and the public deserve to know, with evidence based on facts, whether first responders can reach the site fast enough to save a life. That analysis has not been done. The EIR relied on the wrong fire station, and the record contains no modeling to back up the claim that response times will be safe. That is a textbook case for recirculation under SEQA. Here is... So there's an opportunity here. Our community has identified a secondary access point across the rail line. It would significantly improve EMS access to the site. Based on the same public travel time data, this alternate route would allow emergency crews to reach the site from the permanent station within five minutes, even during peak PM congestion. Adding this access road wouldn't just benefit future residents of the project, it would greatly improve emergency access for the existing community, too. And it's a clear, feasible mitigation that could reduce or avoid the safety issue entirely. So tonight, I ask the council to recirculate the EIR, model real EMS response times from the permanent station, and add the second access road across the rail line as a mitigation measure. Because if we can identify a fix that saves time and saves lives, the city has a responsibility to act. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have the other organized presentation? Is that?
I believe Beth Barnum's up next.
Oh, Beth Barnum. Okay.
And then the next group.
Okay.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Council Members. I am a resident above, where we've been evacuated, on Worcester. So my concern is not necessarily the housing. I understand that Oceanside has a housing issue. My issue is the safety, which has been brought up repeatedly. On January 27th, in a meeting, Division Chief Blake Dorsey said that an evacuation plan was not required because it wasn't in a high or very high fire hazard severity zone. But now it is, but there hasn't been an evacuation plan looked at. So my concern is not just the residents that are currently there, but the 199 people that are going to be there. So look at another access point. I know some people are poo-pooing traffic, but when you have it blocked because there's a fire, it is a major, major safety concern. So we urge the city to reevaluate the project for everyone involved. Thank you.
Thank you. So now we have...
Madam Mayor, I was just informed that this is just going to be a regular speech and not a group presentation.
Okay, so this is a two-minute?
Correct.
Okay. So do we have any other group presentations, or is this the last one?
No, this would be the last speaker. But again, this is a public hearing.
Right.
And Carol, would you need the handheld microphone?
What?
The handheld microphone, if you have...
Do you like to use it?
Oh.
If you have...
No, I'll go over here.
If you have documents, on the document camera, do you want it? Okay, there you go.
Sure.
Ready?
Mayor Sanchez and council members, my name is Carol Lay, and I live on Olive Drive. Thank you for your time and all you do for our community. I know these decisions are not easy, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Since the first public scoping meeting on May 9th, 2024, residents of Voice concerns about using Olive Drive as the only access point for the OPA project, along with traffic, noise, and safety impacts. Sadly, those concerns have been ignored or minimalized. When the draft EIR was released, I questioned the traffic counts and counted the traffic and contacted the traffic division about their methods. No response came until the questions appeared in the final EIR. Council Unlimited was cited for their 30 years of business and video recording methods. The applicant kindly gave us access to that video, and I personally watched 24 hours of footage logging vehicles by time, type, direction, and color. Their count is off by nearly 80 vehicles. Whether that's considered acceptable or not, it undermines public confidence in the EIR's accuracy. Second, the project's traffic projection of 4.75 trips per dwelling unit doesn't consider the 382 parking spaces or real-world trips for errands, deliveries, and recreation. The study used, has a caution for its tiny sample size, and when we asked where it was done, the city traffic engineer didn't know. And actually, I found out. I thought they didn't have a copy of the ITE Trip Generation Manual, but they do have one online. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. All right, this is a public hearing. So if you wish to address the council at this time about this project, you are welcome to do that, even if you didn't sign up. Just approach the podium, state your name, and you have up to two minutes to speak. So approach the podium, provide your name for the record.
My name is John Weber. I live at the corner of Olive and Bradley. My backyard backs out into College Boulevard. I've been living there for 28 years. And when I bought into the neighborhood, it was considered College Park. And I bought it because it was a nice, conservative-friendly neighborhood. And what you're discussing here is going to turn that around upside down backwards. The traffic situation, I went up and down and all around with Shannon Vitale in regards to allowing us a dedicated left-hand turn lane coming out of our neighborhood, which was denied for several years. So that put us in a position where the people coming across had two dedicated right-hand turn lanes. We only had zero dedicated lanes, which created a lot of problems physically, psychologically for the neighbors in my neighborhood and myself especially. I'm here to tell you that your stats aren't correct. And by putting that project in down there, you're going to destroy our neighborhood as we know it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Thank you. Next, just go ahead and state your name, and you have up to two minutes.
I'm Daniel Carr. I own the house across the street from the house that was on fire. I invite each and every one of you, especially the civil whatever you are, to come into Olive Drive during rush hour, do a U-turn at the cul-de-sac, and go out and try to make a left-hand turn or make a right-hand turn. My hint is go up the street to Emerald and do a U-turn up there, then do the right-hand turn. Now, you guys are putting in, oh, you guys did that magic easement thing? Why don't you guys create an easement down to Corporate, put in a railroad crossing, put in a bridge or a culvert, just like they have their college in Rancho Del Oro, and they have the light there, and that would relieve that traffic, plus it'll allow the fire to come in. You know, I've seen several files down there. That being said, you guys are putting 199 units here, you're putting 265 at Crouch, and you're putting 900 units at Moon Valley Nursery, and the 265 up by the pool. That's like 1,600 units. Multiply that by two, and that's 3,200. It's getting crowded here, way too crowded. It's affecting our thing, our quality of life. I can take mass transit down to downtown Oceanside, Carlsbad, and Encinitas, but I can't take the train to Costco. I can't take the train to Twin Oaks to go golf. I can't take the train to Terramar to go surf. It's unrealistic, but we need to cut down on the crowds. I know we need affordable housing. My daughter had to move to Kappa Zone to get affordable housing. Stop the overdevelopment. And it's not just here, it's all of San Diego County. I've been here since 61. I watched the OB period get built. I watched Mary Mesa get built. I watched UTC get built, and it's just like, all that wilderness is gone.
Thank you.
Oh, and I vote for you every time.
Thank you. That's not going to influence my vote. Hi, state your name, and you have up to two minutes to speak.
Hello, my name is Daniel Miller. I'm actually a new resident to Oceanside. I just live around the corner from Olive on Crystal Street. And I just want to say thank you, councilpeople and mayor, for just allowing the opportunity for even residents to speak for so long and a little disorganized. From an emotional standpoint, I just want to make that everyone is trying their best to be either public speakers or just trying to make their point across, and we don't have all of our facts straight, but we're trying our best to just tell the community that we want a better Oceanside overall. And I just want to extend that fact that it's not just our neighborhood that we want to do that. We want to make Oceanside altogether affordable, a better, more transitable kind of place. And I just want to say thank you, everyone who's worked towards that, and I just want to hope the councilpeople will make this an effort to review what everyone is saying. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. And what was your name? Daniel?
Daniel Miller.
Miller. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi.
I am Dave Gesche, G-E-S-H-A-Y. I live at 4055 Olive Drive, across from John, across from Megan, across from a lot of people up and down the street. How many here of you guys, and thanks for letting us talk, were at the City Planning The City Planning Commission voted, and we heard it two or three times tonight, unanimously? Right, unanimously? They voted unanimously that the project was a go. But three of the city commissioners said, "I wouldn't want it in my backyard." Three of them said, "I wouldn't want it in my backyard." But they said they weren't here for the neighborhood. They were here to decide whether the project was a good project. And they said it's a good project because they didn't have to concern themselves with the outside neighborhood. They just concerned themselves with the project. So I want you guys to think about it, and you guys have to decide, is it good for the neighborhood or just the project? Thank you.
Thank you. State your name, and you have up to two minutes to speak.
Thank you. Good evening. I am Antonio Chavez. And I just want to say that I really understand everyone's concerns. I have lived in Oceanside my entire life. I live near the Crouch Sprinter Station, and they're building a bunch of apartments there. They're not affordable apartments. This is a proposal for almost 200 affordable apartment units that we absolutely need. I know we're concerned about neighborhoods, but we live in Oceanside. We're all Oceanside people. We have unhoused people in Oceanside that need this opportunity. We have people who are struggling to pay their rent, working 40 hours a week, and homeschooling their kids, and working their butts off to pay rent. And this is a great opportunity to help those people, our people. These people are Oceanside people. This isn't about one neighborhood on Olive. It is. Those people are important. Their voices matter, their opinions matter, their concerns are important. But this is a bigger issue that we're facing, and it is extremely important that this council votes to approve this proposal. Please do it. We need it. I think it's in the best interest of everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak on this item?
Hello, my name is Alex. I'm going to be translating for her.
Okay, what is her name?
Mi nombre es Cristina Moreno. Como ya saben, anteriormente he venido yo aqui. Este tengo mas de una regular 21 años viviendo en Oceanside.
You guys know I've been here a lot of times, and I've been living here more than...
21 years.
Living here more than 21 years.
Okay, yo lo único que les vengo a decir aqui es que tal vez no podemos poner, o no quieren poner en prioridad las personas más humildes, que no pueden pagar una renta tan alta como las que tienen dinero.
Maybe some of you guys don't want to put priorities on more humble people that can't pay for rent that's higher than people that can afford it.
Pero nada mas dense cuenta que todas las personas que ganan un sueldo mínimo, esas son las personas trabajadoras que nos dan de comer y que llegan nuestro plato de comida, que podemos tener un plato de comida en nuestra mesa, frutas, verduras, de todo. Sin ellos, honestamente, en nuestra mesa no habría nada.
People that work out in the sun, work out hard, they allow us to have food in our stomachs, and without them, we wouldn't have anything to eat.
También las personas que trabajan en los hoteles, cuánto les pagan, cuantos hoteles tienen que limpiar al día, y díganme en qué situación están trabajando para llevar un sustento a su casa.
People that work in hotels, how much do they get paid? They don't get paid that much, and see how much they can bring home.
No se me hace justo que quieran que todos paguemos igual cuando la situación no somos iguales, todos en cuestión económica. Unos que sentados en sus sillas muy cómodas ganan mucho más que una persona que se mata trabajando en el campo.
Some people that work really hard for their money, they don't earn as much money as some people that can just sit at home and enjoy while they make a lot of money.
Well, she was talking about working in the fields.
Like working out in the fields.
Yeah.
Y usted, ¿cuánto hace al año? Mi esposo hace 60 mil al año, y aun así no es suficiente porque tiene que ganar 110 mil dólares. Pero usted no va a poder, su familia no va a poder vivir aquí. Exacto.
Okay.
Pero, ¿cuanto tiempo hemos vivido aquí? Y por qué ahora dan prioridad a las personas que sí pueden pagar cuando gracias a todos nosotros que somos los de abajo, este pueblo se mantiene.
Okay, so she basically is saying, if we're all equal, why is it that some of us aren't able to pay? I think it's more about access to affordable housing, but this is not affordable for her, her family. Is that correct?
Que estas viviendas, uno tiene que hacer por lo menos 65 amión. Okay, pero tal vez va a haber otras personas que se pueden beneficiar. No lo estoy diciendo por mí, pero ojalá alguien más lo pueda usar. No podemos ser egoístas en decir solo porque mi casa pierde valor.
Okay, gracias. So what she said is, well, maybe I won't be able to live there, but maybe other people will be able to afford it. You can state your name, and up to two minutes.
Good evening, Oceanside City Council, members of the public. My name is Joseph Muddell, and I'm an Oceansider born and raised. I'll keep this very short, as I will speak more on this topic of affordable housing later during the Off Agenda Item section for this afternoon's agenda. However, I do strongly all urge you to vote yes on this resolution. As someone who has researched the housing crisis here in the city for close to seven months now, this is an amazing project that alleviates the housing shortages this city faces, especially in terms of the lack of affordable housing. As someone who takes public transit from time to time and is a strong proponent of it, the Sprinter Line Access, including in this project, will most definitely benefit the future residents of this project. I urge you all to vote yes on this project. Thank you.
Thank you. And... Next speaker?
My name is Bruce Anders. I live on 2530 Bradley Street in the affected area. The lady, Madam Mayor, members of the council, I don't think anybody here tonight has argued against low-cost housing.
Right.
I don't think that's an issue at all. The issue really is quality of life and public safety. When I say public safety, I've heard of several things. One is something I haven't heard addressed, and I don't, I'm not sure if it's addressed, the EIR, is in the last 25 years, two projects have been killed on that site because of geological evidence that there's... is in the last 25 years, two projects have been killed on that site because of geological evidence that there's unstable ground there. That is an accident waiting to happen. In terms of public safety, in terms of the, of evacuation, I think that is very, very real. I've heard the arguments about why that's not such a big deal. Folks, come hang out in our neighborhood for a while. You'll see that it is. At the very least, a mitigation of a secondary access road would go one very long way. Ladies, Madam Mayor, members of the council, thank you very much. I urge a, a no vote, or at least an extension for some kind of mitigation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item?
My name is Mike Blankers, and I live in the area. All I want to say is, um, the city has already spent $6 million on this project, and given that to the developers, it's a good project. We need more housing. The issue is access, the road. And I think what we're all saying is we propose that you guys make a motion to recirculate the EIR and to revisit the issue. That's it.
Thank you. All right, anybody else? All right, um, then I'm... Okay. I was just about to gabble it.
I was, I'll, I'll make this less.
Go ahead.
I wasn't planning to speak on this. I actually have a fire mountain. But I think what I'm hearing everybody say from a neutral perspective.
Give your name.
Oh, sorry, Shannon Bryant. Uh, it's, it's simply, there's a due diligence by the city on behalf of any resident that is going to live in that development to make sure that you are addressing safety concerns and access when it comes to whether they need an ambulance called, or there's a fire, or something else. It's not just the existing residents, but it's due diligence for any future resident. Whether or not they make $10 an hour or $500 an hour, that should not matter. And I, I agree with the last speaker that I, I highly recommend that you do recirculate the EIR and you address the safety issues and the emergency response times. Take a look at the traffic stuff and doing alternative access that you can ensure those future residents, they have just as much a voice as everyone else, and we need to speak for them now and protect their future. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so I don't see anyone else rising. I, I guess I'll say it that way. So I'm gonna, uh, close this portion of the public hearing, and, uh, Meg Lay, you do have, what was it, four minutes? Four thirty-two? Forty thirty-two? Four minutes, thirty-two seconds left for rebuttal, if you wish to address the council.
Alrighty. So the reason why there was not a continuance at the Planning Commission meeting is because nobody thought it was going to be possible to go and build over the rail line. That is exactly what the Commissioner chair said on the video at the January 27th meeting. Like I said, I reached out to North County Transit. They said they're open to looking at plans. The applicant has never created any plans for this. The city never pursued this. We think that this should be pursued under sequel guidelines. It says that the EIR must be recirculated if a feasible alternative wasn't considered and would reduce environmental impacts. That is exactly what my neighborhood and my community will be experiencing. This does reduce the impacts for traffic noise and is a solution to all of our issues with the fire code and emergency response time. The CPU's formal application process is 18 months. I think we can hold off for 18 months to go and get this right. There are other affordable housing developments in process that are also going to be built. By the time this is finished, it will still meet the arena cycle that we are currently in, and you will be meeting your arena goals. So, all we're saying is do this right the first time, and it hasn't been done right. And we need to go and recirculate it, to go and consider this option, because this option has been on the table, and it was never looked at. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so, um... Did staff want to add anything? No? Okay. So to council then, um, and we're going to start off with Councilmember Figaro.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for everyone that... Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to everyone that spoke, um, to this today. Um, I have several questions, um, for staff based on the staff report and, and the comments made today. I want to start with a question to, um, the developer in regards to, um, we received the email yesterday, uh, from the developer, stating that they would be willing to make 100% of all of these units, uh, up to 80% AMI. Can you speak to that, please?
Absolutely.
And what that would entail?
So, if I may use...
And I also only have 10 minutes to ask my questions, so...
I'm sorry, I'll go fast.
Please don't take long.
So currently, there are 39 units proposed for moderate-income households at the property. Uh, at 120% of AMI, no greater than that per household. What we would like to propose is, uh, changing that such that it would be 100% affordable, given I think the dire need that we've heard here tonight, particularly with, uh, Housing Commissioner Dwyer Voss, who mentioned there's only one unit available to households of 80% AMI for two bedrooms. So ultimately, you could see here that those 39 units that would change, the average benefit to those households residing in those units would be $1,100 a month. Those household savings per unit over the 55-year life of that affordability is $726,000 per household of additional savings. And for all 39 units is over $28 million back in the pockets of Oceanside households. I think it's pretty powerful.
And, uh, so, a question to that. It says up to 80%. So if someone makes less than 80% of AMI, can they qualify?
Absolutely.
And what is the, is there a minimum of what they can make to qualify?
No, so the project ultimately will have blended AMIs across different unit mixes. And ultimately, the highest would be 80%, and households can earn no greater than 80%, depending on the unit type.
Awesome. Thank you. And so, um, for staff, or you can stay up there, because some of us may. So, uh, looking at the parking, I see electric vehicle parking. It says 96 spaces EV-ready, 38 spaces EV-capable, and 20 spaces EV-installed. Um, so, is there a desire to get up to, is it the max to have 96 EV spaces in total? Or is that...
So Councilmember Figaro, those, those numbers are based on, uh, the city's, uh, electrical vehicle charging ordinance, which requires 50% of, a certain percentage of the spaces to be reserved for EV, and of those, 50% have to be EV, uh, ready. Or, let me rephrase that, have the EV chargers installed. So of the 50%, it sounds like they're reserving more for EV vehicles, and they're doing the minimum percentages for EV charging stations.
I understand.
The other ones are EV-capable.
Okay, thank you. Uh, for the condition of approval for, uh, the Transportation Demand Management Program, I do have a question about the unbundled parking. Uh, can you or staff speak to that, and what that would entail, and the cost, and would that impact these prices that we see up here on the board for potential renters?
Absolutely. So ultimately, this project was not required to provide any parking, given its proximity to transit, as well as its 100% affordable nature per state law. And as a result of that, uh, SIDLAC and TCAC, the Tax Rate Allocation Committee for the state, uh, has rules and regulations around the ability to charge for parking. And ultimately, we are developers of affordable housing. We are not in the parking business. We recognize that there is a market rate in Oceanside at certain Class A developments for monthly parking. And ultimately, we're not in the business of trying to jack up, uh, parking rent per month. So ultimately, that parking rent would be affordable, and ultimately, if we do decide to charge for it separately, I cannot envision a scenario in which it is greater than anything else, but ultimately, it would be determined by our financing and those regulations at a state level. So we'd have to abide by that.
So you said affordable, but let's say someone has two cars, because I'm assuming the, the purpose of this is to have people, uh, use the Sprinter Station, right? Uh, but let's say a family has two cars, and we have someone like, uh, the mother who came up and spoke, or, um, the manager at Albertson's. How would this impact them? It would be $30 a month extra, $100 a month extra. What does that look like, and is it per car?
Specific to this site in particular, there are individual spots, and additionally, there are tandem spots. Those would ultimately be priced differently. A lot of our two- and three-bedroom households would probably be assigned the tandem spot. And ultimately, how we usually do at our developments is that every unit gets access to one spot, and then the additional ones are on a first-come, first-served basis. But the pricing itself is ultimately dictated by whether or not we decide to include it as part of our ba-, if we want to get really technical about it, as part of our basis, as part of our tax rate application. Uh, that would allow the eligible basis to be calculated based on the financing that would be provided for the project. So it's all governed at a state level.
Sure. And is that only applicable if the TDM conditional approval is applied, or is it still applicable even without, um, the program? Meaning the, meaning the charging fees for parking?
So I think there's a, there's technically a difference between legally and what we would do in practice. Legally, regardless of whether or not the TDM is there, parking could be charged for separately, irrespective of the TDM. But as part of the TDM, we have been willing to accept the condition of the TDM because of the, all the other benefits associated with it. But ultimately, again, I think the unbundled parking is one aspect of it. But it's, it's hard to say in, right now, if, what that rent would be, but I mean, ultimately, if someone has a concern about it down the road, it's, in, in practice, is a little bit different than what's required.
But, and, and, and in all cases, um, you would...
Even without the TDM, just to be clear, even without the TDM, we could charge separately for parking if we wanted to.
But it still cannot go above a certain amount, correct? Because it still has to be affordable.
Correct, that's governed at the state level. So we don't get to necessarily determine that.
Thank you. Thank you. I did see something in regards to bike and safety, how this would eventually, it says RDA project would connect to the bicycle network from the project site along Olive Drive to College Boulevard, and that proposed RDA project would provide a new all-weather pedestrian and bicycle path connection to College Boulevard Sprinter Station.
Councilmember Figaro, a city council guest, that is correct.
Okay, thank you. And just to clarify, based on what we see in the reports, uh, this property is now designated as a very high fire severity zone, correct?
Correct. Oh, sorry.
I'm speaking fast, I'm sorry, because I see my time.
Uh, Councilmember Figaro, that is correct. As of the updated CAL FIRE maps released on March 25th, the site is not designated in a very high fire severity zone.
And then to, for our fire department, um, as far as response times, I know that that was mentioned. Can you clarify in 20, 30 seconds?
No.
Yes. As indicated by the appellant, they were indicating a five-minute response time was required. That is not the case. There was a resolution from council in 2005 that established a goal of reaching everywhere in the city within five minutes of response time 90% of the time. Um, that's not something that we have achieved yet anywhere in the city. Um, this project's no different than that.
Thank you.
True.
You know, I appreciate the developer mentioning 1986 and, and what this area looked like then. I've, I've been born and raised in this community. I've lived a couple miles up the street on College Boulevard. I use College Boulevard every day. I still remember when the Blockbuster sign went up on the corner of College and Oceanside Boulevard, and everyone got really excited. I remember when that shopping center was a quarter of the size, and it was just Super Broncos and a gas station. And I think the karate dojo place, and then it expanded. That Albertson's is the Albertson's that I use. That's the shopping center that I use. But I've also, um, you know, most recently was the former executive director of a homeless shelter for families with children. A lot of the families that we serve, uh, weren't there because they were, they got there because of substance abuse or, you know, other issues that we hear about when we, when our houseless community is being described by some folks. They were there for economic purposes, and they had been pushed out. Uh, and they were struggling to find, um, affordable housing here in the city of Oceanside. Uh, the majority of the people that we served at that shelter were children. Um, a lot of them were single moms, and they were from the city of Oceanside. So, um, you know, we just recently had a whole council here full a few weeks ago, uh, talking about affordability and the need to protect renters. Um, and so it is very urgent for us to provide affordable housing. This location's near Miracost College, um, Krista McAuliffe Elementary. And it's also accessible to, again, our, our Sprinter Station, um, and, um, the various bus stops. So, uh, with that, I would like to move to approve, um, but with including...
Taking out unbundled parking?
Take, not taking out bundled parking, but including the 100%, um, no greater than 80% of AMI.
Second.
So, so you want to include the unbundled parking on people who have, um, a harder time being able to pay?
I don't want to, I want to support the Transportation Demand Management, um, program based on what was shared. It's, it seems like it would apply with or without it.
All right. So there's a motion and a second. Councilmember Weiss?
Yeah, I, I have a question. Um, on the slide that listed the TDM, it also said that there was, um, transit pass subsidies, but there were comments made by the appellant that they were not being provided, um, any kind of subsidized transit passes. So are there going to be subsidized transit passes, or are there not?
There will be.
And, and just Councilmember Weiss, to clarify, the appellant, or the applicant agreed to that inclusion of the TDM plan, I think after the appellant submitted her appeal. That might be why it was not addressed, and I can let the applicant speak further on that.
No, as long as they're, they're going to have them. I'd like to know about the, um, at-grade crossing, because I think you had made a comment during your presentation that you had additional information. Because in reading the email from North County Transit, it would appear that it does have some ability. I mean, obviously, things come with a cost, but I guess my question is, did you actually look at it? I mean, I get that in the EIR, it's not addressed, but did you actually look at it and see if it's even possible? Don't worry about it. I'm, I'm not going to need more time.
Do you want to give him the mic?
Thank you so much. So ultimately, yes, per sequel requirements, we're not required to do this. I think it's clear, hopefully, through our committee outreach, that we've gone beyond the minimum requirements that the city has. And ultimately, part of that endeavor, the first call we ever had about this project, well before the first meeting we had at OFD, was to a bridge and tunnel engineer. Just to see, is there a way that we can do this? How can we do this? And ultimately, irrespective of cost, we're 100% affordable housing, but if we were to even cross at-grade, and with no bridge and no tunnel, and somehow avoid the creek, which still requires a bridge anyway, but even if we were to avoid it, we cannot force any of those private landowners to sell us their land. The city cannot eminent domain that area and that drive aisle there. And ultimately, we did have conversations with CPUC, as the appellant mentioned, and we also have had communication with NCTD. So that communication has been ongoing, as you can imagine with First Original Project. After Planning Commission, the appellant submitted an appeal that requested that we do formal communication with them in order to ask if it could be feasible. This was the email that I sent on February 18th, nearly three weeks after Planning Commission. Just following up again, asking the manager of real estate there, I know we've talked about this in the past, but just to be clear, can you please do a deeper dive into it? Please let me know when you're done reading this, and I can give you the follow-up response. The follow-up response from NCTD was here. As you could see, and I think the image is actually important as well with the orange. But ultimately, as the appellant is included in their appeal, there are CCNRs that govern the parking use and restrictions around the use between the two private landowners and, and NCTD from the origination of that parking lot that's there. NCTD from the origination of that parking lot that's there. Ultimately, what has had to occur was that NCTD, you see that last sentence, would not be supportive of a private crossing in this area of any sort that would impact the platform and the operations. So as the appellant has pointed out, since this email was sent, the appellant has reached out to the CEO of NCTD and had follow-up communication with them. And NCTD, as the email that was shared, there was a vague email written asking if any plans would be looked at. And of course, NCTD, being the public agency that it is, said they would look at any plans. With that being said, once NCTD had that communication, they followed up with me, given our longstanding relationship, to confirm and advise me that communication had been had with the appellant. And ultimately, following that communication, this is the same email as before, following up there, you can see that everything that was said on February 19th, and this is as of May 2nd last week, everything that was said below still remains. And ultimately, those parking agreements would be impacted, the platform would be impacted, and there is no ability to do an at-grade crossing in that area.
Thank you. And I, I understand the, the neighborhood's issue and concern. I also understand that as a density bonus project, we're kind of limited as what we can do. And I guess to either the city attorney or staff, from everything I've seen in your staff report, the city has not been able to identify a specific adverse impact that would provide the basis for us to deny this project. Would that be accurate?
Councilmember Weiss, members of the city council, that is accurate. Staff has not identified any specific adverse impacts as defined in, in the government code that would preclude us from granting any of the requested waivers for the project.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Councilmember Robinson.
Thank you. And to save some time, I'm going to have a question for our traffic engineer and I'll have a question for our fire, whoever wants to field that one, and probably one for the developer up here. But just to start, I do want to thank the appellant and, and the applicant both for the time they spent sitting with me and explaining and giving me their opinion. I had a great talk with Meg and her mom in my office and we went through a lot of things. And, and I just want to reinforce, I, I do think that if you read the emails that she presented tonight, that the appellant presented, you really got the bureaucratic reply from a bureaucratic agency that's going to tell you, just like I would if, if you contacted me and said, hey, would you look at that? And I'd say, I'll look at it. You know, that's kind of the way things work. But I do agree, and, and when we talked about the at-grade crossing and all the things, there's so much in that, you know, getting across the creek, trying to get the land, and it just, there's no way that could happen in 18 months. And it would delay this project and, and be pretty bad. But I do want to talk to our traffic engineer, where'd you go? Should I know she's here? There she is. So my question is, is this a gated community where there's no gate? So people drive. Hi.
Hi.
What's the current speed limit on Olive?
25 miles per hour.
Do you anticipate, because you know where I'm going to go with this, is when we add more traffic coming out on this, and I'm sure the neighbors will start complaining about the speed, and then, do you anticipate any need for future traffic calming or speed adjustments on that road based on this project?
Not at this time. But I mean, it's up, we can evaluate. Once the development is completed and occupied, we can evaluate that segment of road again.
Okay. And we, I know you do that a lot, but that might be something that you could put on your.
Radar.
To-do list later in the, when you have time. Okay.
We, we also have discussed it at length. So we've agreed that we will revisit it after the project is built.
Yeah. I think it's a fair thing to do to see what the impacts are, because that's one of the things that I get a lot in our communities. Thank you, and I'm done with that. For our fire folks, chief, hi.
Hello.
So the questions I have for you deal with the fire risk. We heard a lot about fire risk and right now, you're familiar with that area. And I know it's real popular, never to pass up a disaster. So everybody looks at the Pacific Palisades fire, before it was Lahaina in Hawaii, and then it was the Camp Fire in Paradise and, and say, oh, this could happen here. Given where this project is, do you see any similarities to the type of risks that, that this neighborhood would face? And I know I'm kind of asking you to speculate a little bit, so.
No, when we evaluate this project, obviously, we start with any law statutes, ordinance, codes, and we apply those. And so those have all been applied to this, this project, and I think that's worthy of noting. From there, we look at the fire hazard severity zone. This initially was not in any type of severity zone. Since then, we've had these hazard maps come out. It has been indicated that it is in a high zone, not a very high. It is worthy of noting that, based on information of, from CAL FIRE, that the separation between high and very high is between 40 and 60% of burn probability. So it is quite a wide gap between those. We always continue to go further. We look at a variety of factors that impact risk, from the threat that exists to the vulnerability of the area in question. And based on that assessment of those factors, we have not determined that we need to go above and beyond any codes or ordinances that are in place.
So basically, this is going to take up a lot of the, mitigate a lot of the fuels that's there now that may, you could have a fire tomorrow there in, in some of that fuel, and this is going to, this project will take some of that up, right?
That's correct. For the existing community, this will actually increase the buffer between the native and non-native vegetation that lies in that area. This project in particular has construction features that the existing community does not. And there are defensible space measures within this project that, that increase that buffer as well.
Thank you. And then just, we talked a little bit about the homeless encampments and stuff. What measures are you going to take to?
So ultimately, one comment was made, one public comment was made regarding the encampments there. Ultimately, the conservation easement will be on title and recorded in perpetuity. There will be an endowment funded, and ultimately, there's a par associated with that that does a habitat management plan that assesses the value of the endowment and will allow not only the conservation easement to be managed in perpetuity with general inspections annually and otherwise, but also the project is bearing the expense of over 3,000 linear feet of metal fencing to secure the entirety of the conservation easement.
Okay. I've got a little less than five minutes. I want to talk about the secondary access point. And, and I do think that there is value in having a secondary access, whether it's for routine traffic to go in and out, but more so for fire access if you, if you were to need it. And there's a, I don't have a picture of it, but maybe you do. There's a, it's actually in the North County Transit District right of way. It's south of the tracks going north. You know what I'm talking about? It looks like a little horse path almost. I'd had discussion with the fire chief that, you know, we wouldn't, to make it an emergency access for fire vehicles to get in and out, it wouldn't necessarily need to be an improved road, but it could be an all-weather driving surface, 14 feet wide, bollards to keep regular traffic from going on it to, so that fire access. I had a talk with the city manager about it, and I guess there were some preliminary numbers kicked around. And, and it's not cheap. It's in the $450,000 estimated range, just looking at a project like that. But would a, some sort of road like that, that would be accessible to the fire department make it a, I, I'm not saying the project's not safe, but would it make it safer?
I think it's fair, fair to say that obviously, anytime you have two accesses, that's better than one. If you have three accesses, that's better than two, and so on and so forth. And what we've done is, is apply the code as it stands. And we have Assistant Fire Marshal Randy Hill up here. He can answer any specifics regarding the code. But to answer your question specifically, certainly, an additional access road would be beneficial, but is not required.
Randy, do you have any, I mean, could, could we put some sort of, could a fire access only road be put in without doing major renovations?
Yeah, I think as Chief Thor said, I think anytime you have a secondary access is a positive thing. So if we went down that direction of requiring a, just an emergency vehicle access, we'd want it to be built per California Fire Code. You did mention 14 feet. What, what that is is essentially a, a single, a one-way drive. Ideally, if we wanted to go with that emergency access road, we still want it to meet at least the minimum standards of the California Fire Code, which is 20 feet wide, all-weather surface paved, either concrete, asphalt, pavers, whatever the case is. That could support all of our fire apparatuses of 78,000 pounds.
Okay. All, alls I say there is, I think there is a potential, and I don't want to do anything that would slow this project down or to stop it, but there's a lot of smart people in the room and, and, and the city and the developer and the community. Somehow, much like you said, you'll continue to monitor traffic. Can we look at, put this on your tickle file to kind of look at and say, hey, can we do it? Is there a way of coming up with some funding source or something? I don't know what, but I think it is, it's there. There's, the start of it's there. And I think if somehow we could come up with some ideas on how to fund it and how to do that, it'd be great. So I'll leave that alone just as an idea. Real quick. So they showed a fire, the, the picture of the fire and all the fire hose and stuff. When you have a chief, a, a single-family fire like that showed, how many first alarm resources do you send?
The first alarm of a working fire like that will usually have, you know, five fire engines, an ambulance, a battalion chief, and a ladder truck.
So it's pretty mu, pretty good to, fair to say that any fire, that's, that's what people are going to see. Hoses in the ground, engines parked all over, correct?
That, that's correct. And I do just want to make the point that when we talk about emergency vehicle access, we do realize it's an inconvenience for the community when we block the roadway like that, but it is not a problem for us to access the emergency. In this case, with this development, even if we had a, a structure fire within the existing single-family areas, we would be able to get units into the additional multifamily development as well. In fact, if resources were already on scene, we would probably manage that incident and we would break units away from our existing incident so that we could have a quicker response time for that.
Thanks. You knew right where I was going. Thank you. And we did it within 10 minutes. Nicely done.
He's cooked.
That was at a negative one second, though.
And we didn't rehearse that, man.
Uh, Deputy Mayor Joyce.
First of all, I want to, I want to thank everybody who worked on this, and this has been a long-term project and it had a lot of ins and outs. So I know a lot of people put a lot of hard work into it and that should never go unlooked. I do want to say that I feel for the Olive Drive families, especially when they're feeling like safety is involved and that they could be jeopardized by a project. I want to just acknowledge that. It is always a very heavy burden to feel like that's coming into a neighborhood where you feel safe and then you, you're concerned about this really big change and, and the impacts that it might have, or feels like it has on the safety. I really appreciate staff addressing those concerns the best they could. And everybody worked really well to have this conversation openly. There's a lot of ins and outs and questions, and I appreciate both ends of that. I also appreciate the neighborhood's candor and tone. If this gets approved, I, I'm sure that you all will be welcoming neighbors because you are, you show kindness and you have throughout this process, and I just appreciate that. The project does have a lot of positives. It's actually one of the most environmentally friendly projects I've seen since I've been on council, which is, it says a lot. The conservation easement is, is a really big deal. The all-electric, the TDM, which I did want to clarify, Councilmember Figaro, did you want to include the TDM in the, the motion?
Yes, I would.
Okay. Thank you. Just to make sure that that was on the record. And then I agree with community member Christina Moreno, who talked about the income issues, like this doesn't go deep enough, and that's real. We have lots of folks who will not gain access to housing through this because the affordabilities are not deep enough, and that is again on us to continue to work at. But it does help 197 potential families, and we can't solve the housing crisis with one action. It's solved by 100, it's solved by 1,000 consecutive actions that you continually work on it every single time. So I do want to say that this also brings multi-bedroom housing units, homes into our community that will be accessible to folks that cannot access rents in other areas. It's a working families project. Our people really need this, and that I will be voting to deny the appeal and support this critical working families project.
All right. Thank you. I want to thank Councilmember Weiss and Councilmember Robinson for all their questions. This is a really, really tough one for me, because while I am a big supporter of affordable housing, the one thing that really stops me in the tracks is safety. I visited the site, must have been around 2:00 and was leaving around 3, maybe a little after 3:00. And while it was easy to get there, or easy, I mean, there was already traffic, of course, and it did take time to get in there. But it was a hell of a thing getting out of there. And I, I got really scared that I was going to get hit. And that is because college is at F and it's unacceptable. And so we're, you know, kind of seem to be ignoring that, right? Because, oh, well, we have to accept these, you know, takes longer to get across town. You can have a seat, sir. You're kind of making me nervous standing there.
Sorry.
I, I think that we should be fighting to make it safer for these folks. I, I wanted to make a left, and I have to tell you, at the end of the day, I couldn't even remember that there was even a light there, because it felt like it wasn't a light. It felt like it was a risk to get out of there. And so I ended up taking a right and then trying to make a left so that I can turn around and go where I really wanted to go. So it wasn't just an inconvenience, which I think is what it's been called. It was a heightened sense of risk, and which to me is, it's stressful. It was very, very stressful getting out of there. And I couldn't really, I, I don't know if I could do that every day. And I'm not just talking about the folks that live there, although they are the ones that are here to say, look, this is an issue. I'm talking about the other several hundred people that would, that will be living in this. I don't know how many people per unit, but definitely. And then, of course, to know that the national standard is, basically recommends that under, that at 200, you, you, you should have a second access, and this is at 199. I, I don't know that 1 should have dissuaded us from trying to figure out how to have that second access, which is why I really appreciated the, the comments from Councilmember Robinson, because I think we're all looking at the potential for a lot of, you know, maybe, maybe, maybe they're just going to be fender benders, right? But maybe not. 45 miles an hour on Olive? Wow. It's residential. It's cul-de-sac. Well, it's, it's, it's still a cul-de-sac because it's not going to go out anywhere else, right? So it's like, oh, well, this is never meant to be a cul-de-sac. Yeah. Because there's no access to any other street, whether on the other side of the project. I mean, wouldn't that have been great? So it's tough, because I tend to really focus on the human aspect of this. I think I've been around a little longer than everybody else on this council in Oceanside. So having grown up here with maybe 30, 40, when it was maybe population 30, 40,000, everybody cared about everybody else. Everybody did. And everybody, I hope, does. So this is, this is, this is not how I hope that we move forward. I hope that when we move. I hope that when we move forward in providing the housing that we obviously need to provide at all income levels, and if you look at the, I had asked for a dashboard to show us where we're at, and it's obviously the low and very low that are just not being built, Let's not assume that just because you're low or very low that your quality of life should be low, too. That is another concern of mine, is especially, you know, putting unbottled parking, which we haven't done yet, right? This is an experiment on the backs of the poorest folks that would not be able to afford that. So I was hoping that was going to be taken out, but it's not. Hopefully, hopefully, that's not how we're going to be moving forward either. So we do have a motion, and we have a second. Please vote.
Can we just, this is on the appeal, right? So no is, I just want to clarify what we're voting on.
The motion was basically staff's recommendation to deny the appeal.
To clarify, with the amendments that were provided, meaning that resolution would include the agreed-upon resolution from the applicant that involves the TDM as described, as well as the revised condition of approval in the Planning Commission resolution regarding the 100% affordable as opposed to the 80/20.
Motion approved, 401. Sanchez, no.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and take a 10-minute break. We'll meet again, we'll come back at 9:00. Okay, we were on, on, it was after Celeste spoke? So we're on number eight. Jerry Nicholas, please, please close the door. Hold on, Jerry. Please close the door. All right, Jerry, thank you.
Hello. Thank you, Honorable Mayor Sanchez, Deputy Mayor, and City Council for having me. I'm a proud member of the AANHPI community, longtime Oceanside resident, daughter of a retired Sergeant Major, and staff member of the North County LGBTQ Resource Center. Did you know that since the late '70s, the rainbow flag has been an international symbol of LGBTQ pride? The flag was originally commissioned by San Francisco City Commissioner Harvey Milk, the first openly gay elected official. The flag first appeared at the San Francisco Gay Freedom Parade in 1978. Not much afterwards, Harvey Milk was assassinated, solidifying the rainbow flag as LGBTQ solidarity. Today, the rainbow flag symbolizes people all over the world. We are elected officials, doctors, chefs, teachers, scientists, community leaders, world leaders, youth, students, and business owners. The rainbow flag does not just represent a part of who I am, it stands as a symbol of social justice, solidarity, and love. It represents a safe space, and for some, a place to call home. We are lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, non-binary, and two-spirit. Thank you for your commitment and continued support for our LGBTQ community, our allies, friends, family in Oceanside. Thank you.
Thank you. Charles Corbett, followed by Adam Ríojas.
Councilmembers, good evening. My name's Charles Corbett. I live in District 2, and I wanted to come here today to remind you that I pay a lot of taxes as a married gay man with no children and no elderly parents, that this city spends on things that I don't directly derive value from. But I'm okay to pay those, because it makes this place a better place to live, work, and visit. And if you're considering the fiscal aspects of this flagpole and how residents like me, who aren't getting value from a lot of the other things, could benefit from this, I wanted to share that with you. When members of the LGBT community see this flag flying, what it indicates is a symbol of safety and belonging in a community. And statistically, you know, many of you are probably not members of the LGBT community. And so I'm going to show this flag, one that I'm sure you've seen flying in different places around the world as you've traveled, and you can probably feel that same sense of belonging and safety when you see this flag globally. When this flag is flying in the city of Oceanside, you know, if we use the lady earlier's statistics of 1 in 10 Oceanside residents, what that symbolizes to us and other residents, and importantly, visitors to Oceanside, is that this is a safe space for us. And we've got your city manager here, we've got our chief of police here, and we know as members of your leadership team that they understand the high ethical standard that you expect them to uphold every day. But what that flag flying out front of City Hall will symbolize for us and all city employees is that we should be treated with dignity and respect when we're engaging with the city. So I appreciate you guys considering this. There's going to be a lot of folks that speak against it, but I hope that helps you understand the impact that it would have for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Adam Ríojas, followed by Adra.
Hi. My name is Adam Ríojas. I'm a native Osider, went to Laurel School, Jefferson Junior High, Oceanside High School, and Miracosta College. I completely do not want the flag. A flag symbolizes someone, someone being...
We want to hear him, okay? We want to hear everybody. So please, if you want to, if you want to support something, do this.
A flag symbolizes a conquered people. That's why we have the American flag, because this land was conquered by America, and that's why we're here. You don't see the Mexican flag in any institutions. Mexico is a place of its own. A flag represents a conquered people. Listen, the rich history of Oceanside begins with the mission right to my left. I look right in front of me, and it says, "In God we trust." The Bible totally condemns immorality. Immorality. That's from God. God condemns immorality. Immorality. Now, immorality is, you know, when I grew up in 1980, there was one homosexual in our school. There was no LGBTQ, and the letters that they're now adding with child attraction, none of that was there. None of that was prevalent. None of that was prevalent. And now, all of a sudden, as a resident of Oceanside, a business owner, a pastor of a church, things are changing rapidly and decaying. There is, the Bible says there's only two genders, male and female, Adam and Eve, not Adam and Stee. Bible is very clear. There's a pastor that said that there's two kinds, three kinds of peas in politics, one that protects the people, one that punks the people, and one that perverts the people. Today, you have a chance to be one of those peas, and I'm believing you're all protectors. Do not do this by them.
Adra, followed by Cleda Ríojas.
So it's interesting when you say you want all to be safe, but I don't understand why we're pushing sexual preferences here, because part of those sexual preferences is minor-attracted persons. And it's, that's a pedophile. And I'm a victim from a pedophile. So I don't feel safe when I see that flag, because you're protecting predators and pushing child love like that. That's, you cannot, that's child rape, is what it is. You don't have sex with a child, you rape a child. And there is a massive amount of pedophilia running rampant in our nation. America is the largest consumer of child pornography, and the fact that we are glorifying pedophilia, it's very disturbing, because once you open up that door so wide, you're never going to be able to close it. And until you're a victim of a sexual predator, you're not going to know what that's like, to know that a predator's flag is flying high, okaying the abuse of children. And nobody seems to care about what's happening to children. They're being sexualized on a massive scale. It's being, they're groomed. They're being groomed. And I have been that child. And over the 30 years since I tried to get justice, there isn't any, because people are protecting the predators instead of the victims. And it's really sad to see, because I thought children are our future, but all we're doing is sexualizing them, setting them up to be the victim of a sexual predator instead of protecting them. So when you say you want all to be safe, then you need to take all people into consideration and make sure that all people feel safe. And if some don't, because that is a predator that you are glorifying, then you cannot fly that flag, and it's under your own conscience.
Cleda Ríojas, followed by Nikki D., followed by Max Disposti.
Thank you. I'm Cleda Ríojas. I am representing a voting bloc that feels our voice is increasingly marginalized. The symbolism of the American flag embodies unity and resilience as in the diverse fabric of our great nation. In the spirit of that unity, I urge you to reconsider the necessity of adding additional flags like the LGBTQ flag to our government properties. In doing so, we risk creating division in our city, divisions that ultimately undermine the very inclusivity we strive to promote. Our identities matter, and while everyone should feel valued, it is essential to remember that inclusion cannot come at the expense of others. That is why I say, you're not being inclusive if you do not include me. If our concerns are ignored, I assure you that we will take these matters further. We will engage with local newspapers and launch an internet campaign and name those who we believe are fostering a culture of discrimination and hate against minorities. If we don't feel included, we will make our voices heard. What about the flags that represent the rich tapestry of our community? Jewish, Persian, Christian, Muslim, Cambodian, Filipino, Samoan, Native Americans, and so on? Shouldn't their symbols be honored, too? Each of these communities deserve recognition. Are their contributions to our city of Oceanside any less valid? So let me be clear, the voices continue, if the voices continue to go unrecognized, our collective decision at the ballot box will reflect this disdain. I represent a demographic that perceives discrimination based on the decisions made in this room. As election time approaches, remember that your standing in this community relies on our trust and our vote. So again, I encourage you, pay attention. I hope you choose inclusion without exclusion.
Thank you. Nikki D., followed by Max Disposti, followed by Larry Warner. Is Nikki D. here?
Groomed, starting at the age of 11, I was sexualized for far too long, and it led to nothing but heartache, trauma, and danger. And now we're watching the same trap being set disguised as inclusion under a pride flag flown for everyone, including children, and seeing a man who invites kids into a center under the banner. It is not acceptance, it's a threat to our safety and our community. Raising the pride flag is not about inclusion, it's about domination, and it spits in the face of the American flag, the one that already stands for liberty and equality for all. As a former member of the LGBTQ community, let me be clear, I never needed a flag for a month or any month to feel seen. As someone who I once identified as pansexual, then not a woman, then something else entirely, I chased identity after identity, and still never once did I feel excluded in the United States of America. Why? Because this nation already flies a flag that represents every race, every voice, every citizen, equality under God and law. The American flag is our pride, our unity, our legacy. I am a woman of rich ethnic heritage. I have deep roots in Oceanside from my people of the One Neneo tribe with relation to a Luisenios. Diversity is in my blood, and still I never felt once out of place. I was once a promiscuous addict, still included. A survivor of abuse and domestic violence, still included. A victim of multiple rapes, still included. And now I'm a woman set free in the mighty name of Jesus, and I feel more included than ever before. I share this not for pity, not for applause, but to prove a truth. You don't need a special flag to belong in this country, you already do. Stop divining us in the name of inclusion. We are already one nation, fought for, bled for under, and united under God. E Pluribus Unum, one out of many. Unity and diversity in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you. Max Disposti, followed by Larry Warner, followed by Graham Frazier.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Councilmember. Thank you for the late night. We're all tired. But just, I'm here in support of the proposition for the raising of the rainbow flag. When we raise the rainbow flag here in Oceanside, we send a powerful message that our city stands for dignity, for the freedom of every individual to live authentically. Oceanside is a vibrant, diverse, and growing community, and it is home to the LGBT Center in North County, where millions of dollars have been already invested in employment, business, and supporting housing, just to mention a few. We also recognize that many members of the LGBT community right here in our neighborhoods have experienced exclusion, silence, and discrimination, like the latest federal ban on transgender troops that, as today, were forcibly discharged, their career brutally ended, along with their health care, homes, and just for being trans. Raising the rainbow flag is a small but meaningful act of recognition. It says, you are seen, you are valued, you belong. Prime month, it's a time to honor the courage of those that have fought and continue to fight for equal rights, and it's time to celebrate the contribution that LGBT individuals make to every aspect of their life in Oceanside. This isn't about politics, folks, it's about people. It's about young people who need to know they are not alone. It's about family who deserve to feel safe and supported. It's about choosing visibility over silence. By raising the rainbow flag, we affirm our commitment to justice and equality, breathing in the mission statement of this city, and we show that Oceanside is a place where everyone, regardless of who they are, who they love, can live in pride. So let's stand on the right side of history and follow the lead of other cities like Encinita, Carlsbad, and Vista, and do the right thing. Thank you so much for your work, and thank you. Bye.
Thank you. Larry Warner, followed by Graham Frazier, followed by Steve Burrell.
I stand here as a Christian, embarrassed to claim I'm a Christian, for the God that was so far been revealed seems to be a God of hatred, but I know of a God of love, a God of inclusion, a God who has a pursuing love that's about redemption and hope. The timing of this proposal regarding the raising of the pride flag in Oceanside during the month of June couldn't be better, couldn't be, come at a better time because of the Trump administration's, seems hell-bent on vilifying, dehumanizing, and endangering people in the queer community. Trump administration's proposal to cut funding for specialized services for LGBTQ youth and the United States Supreme Court ruling to allow Trump to, the Trump ban on transgender troops to continue is terrible. These communicate a lack of valuing an entire population of people, which is demeaning and dangerous. I urge this council to unanimously vote in favor of raising the pride flag. We are a city that prides itself on celebrating diversity, and now is the time to demonstrate that commitment to diversity and inclusion. The LGBT plus community in Oceanside is a force of good, and since moving to their new location on Apple Street, they have and continue to expand the help and goodness they provide for the entirety of our community. Now is the time for this council to send a clear message to the LGBT plus community. We see you, we value you, we stand with you, we love you. Please vote to raise and proudly display the pride flag in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Graham Frazier, followed by Steve Burrell, followed by Jimmy Knott.
Ms. Sanchez and councilmembers, my name is Graham Frazier, a 40-year proud resident of Oceanside, living at 2119 Ocean View Road. I mean, proud in the typical sense of proud. I'm a proud white Caucasian man, Christian man, too. I applaud you for having an open discussion. I'm looking forward to listening to you, so that I can understand which of you really has a non, a totally inclusive or non-inclusive attitude towards flying flags at City Hall. The only fully exclusive flag, in my view, is a US flag, the California flag, and perhaps an Oceanside flag. I don't know whether Oceanside has a flag. I hope they do, I hope they will. Do you think a pride flag represents a value of the entire Oceanside community? I think not. We get down to bus tax, the word pride, in this case, is a code for homosexual lifestyle. You know it, and so does everybody else. I find it very provocative inciting the... I find it very provocative inciting division when we citizens need to come together, love and respect, without judgment. By flying a gay flag, the city is saying, this government supports and gives special privilege to this group, group, without, without our city, and that's wrong.
Thank you. Steve Burrell, followed by Jimmy Knott, followed by Candy Johnson.
Mayor Sanchez, councilmembers, Steve Burrell, Oceanside. I first moved here back in the late 80s, and at that time, the police department was using camcorders to chase around gay people to try to drive them out of this community and discourage them from even being here. But we've come a long ways, fortunately. We've made progress, and I want to see that.
Could you hold on just for a second? Sir, we're still in session.
Okay, I'm nearly tricked, okay?
All right, thank you. Go ahead.
Start again. So, we've made a lot of progress. So in 2016, when I was looking at a place to retire, I looked back at Oceanside, and I made the decision to come here. And part of the decision was based on the center that had been created by Max Disposti and many others. And I wanted to live in a safe and informing community, and that's what Oceanside is, and I'm glad that I moved here. I don't regret that. I will spend the rest of my life here with any luck. But I just want to say also, this is about, in my opinion, affirmation of who we are. And as far as affirmation goes, I believe, me and others, many other leaders in this community, we affirm this community every day in a positive way. And at least that you can do is show some respect for us and support us in this week of celebration. And last thing I want to say is, we're not going back. I think I can say that for the rest of my queer community and also our ally. Thank you.
Thank you. Jimmy Knott, followed by Candy Johnson, followed by Susan Custer.
Mayor, councilmembers, Jimmy Knott, 127 Sherri Lane. This item has already been before council a few years ago, and the city's legal has already spoken. It's prohibited from showing any bias or preference. It has to be open to all groups and members of the public, especially if it is a separate, you know, a flag pole. And it's, since it was brought before council, one of the things that was brought before council is theoretically even a neo-Nazi group could take in a request, and they have to be granted access to the flag pole, because that is, or a loony person like me could take and request a Weird Al Yankovic Appreciation Day, and here's a Weird Al Yankovic's flag. So this is what could take place. Now I remind you that this is also something that could take place like in Encinitas with the kook. You know about the kook? The surfer guy down there? They change his clothes. They schedule changing of his clothes now because so many people want to change it. We're gonna have to have a scheduler for this new flag pole. And then we're gonna have to have sponsors for the flag pole scheduler. We're gonna have to have all sorts of new type of amenities. So, basically, in a summary, you know, this is sort of a loony situation, but I don't care what flag you fly on the new pole, as long as you do love one another.
Thank you. Candy Johnson, followed by Susan Custer, followed by Simon or Simone Guzman. Candy Johnson?
Left.
Left, okay. Susan Custer, followed by Simone Guzman.
Good evening. Well, at least we've established one thing this evening from many people in this community, that they feel very safe, secure, and welcomed here. So that's great, and I'm glad they do. I mean, truly, I'm glad. I don't think they need a separate flag or identity, they're one of us, and that's wonderful. So preparing for this tonight, I did a little research on the flag. There's 24 different flags to represent different types of sexuality. I focused on the redesigned progressive pride flag, and I'm wondering why the city needs to represent sexuality with a flag at City Hall. This is a private matter, not a government matter. The quote regarding the progressive flag, I'm gonna quote this, it's for, to celebrate diversity and inclusion for everyone in the LGBTQI+, parentheses, lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, and intersex community. It combines elements of all the traditional rainbow, rainbow flags with other LGBTQ flags to highlight groups that have sometimes been underrepresented in pride celebrations, end quote. Okay, there's nothing in there about non-LGBT people represented. This flag represents all of them. Why don't we stick with that? Everyone said they feel like Oceanside's a welcoming community. Let's not change that. When you fly the progressive flag, the pride flag, you're excluding other people that are not in this quoted description I just read. Now I do have a suggestion. If you are gonna erect a new flag pole, I think you need to also establish a new commission for, to take applications and decide what flag will be flown at which week of the year, and they can meet once a month and pick four flags for the year, and we could fly them all.
Thank you. Simon or Simone Guzman, Patty K., followed by Allison Minogue.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Simone Guzman. I use pronouns such as he, him, and el. I am transgender, and I am very proud of that. And I know earlier someone said something about trying to, you know, be part of this campaign to sometimes spread hate against our community. And I come up here and I say that I'm transgender. Every day I wake up, and I know that I might not have a chance to go back home. And for me, as an older brother and someone that is raised in my family, or I have a role in my family, for me, that's a big deal. Because I know that if something ever were to happen to me that impacts my, my family, the people that I love. And it's important for me, though, despite that fear, that sometimes folks get really stuck on to come in and tell you that I am transgender and look you in the eye and say that. I'm so happy to be a part of this community, because there are so many folks here in this community who identify with that experience, who are part of our LGBTQ plus community. And it's so important for them to know that there are adults who aren't stuck in that fear and in some of the own trauma that folks have, that can sometimes blind folks and make decisions for them at schools or in positions of power. They need to know that there is something different that exists for all of us. Because that flag, yes, it means something for me, it means something for my community, but it's also something for my family. It's for our friends who aren't a part of our community, but they love us. It's for you, too, because you get to show people that it could be different, how you raise families, that you can teach boys to cry, that you can teach girls they can do anything, that they can wear whatever they want, that they shouldn't be abused. All these concepts and ideas, they're not separate from this flag, they're a part of our flag, they're what we're trying to teach. And I really hope that you can be a part of that and continue to show people we're evolving, we're inviting them to something different. And it's not something that should be considered a burden, it's actually a gift. And I hope you can give us that gift and give us that leadership. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Patty K., followed by Allison Minogue, followed by William Walker. Is Patty K. here?
Yes.
Okay, how about Allison Minogue?
She said she already spoke.
Yeah? Okay.
All right. So where am I supposed to be looking? Wait, wait, wait. Restart the clock, because I don't know. Okay, it's right here? Okay.
Oh yeah, she did speak. Number six.
Good evening. My name is Allison Minogue, and I have been a resident of Oceanside for over 25 years. I am here tonight in strong opposition to the pride flag being flown at City Hall. This is literally the last thing council should be focusing on. I drive through potholes daily in our city, see buildings with graffiti, busted windows, and some on prime real estate. In fact, I emailed every single one of you, but not one responded to my email, council and mayor. Isn't that great? And that was about three weeks ago. And how about our homeless situation with constant squatters on the strand and Oceanside Boulevard? Do my children and their friends need to see homeless who are strung out and begging for money on every corner of our city? While I am compassionate to their situation, allowing them to do this is not helping them one bit. I unfortunately know all too well, councilmembers and newly-elected councilmen, Figueroa. As for the pride flag, if you believe it is to be flown, then you will also need to be flying many other flags that represent our culturally diverse city. And to Max Disposti, who has infiltrated our school district and our city on the guise of DEI, DEI is dead. You may have had a head start over the last decade, but I am wide awake to you and your woke actions. Focus on your center, stay out of our children's school district, and continued coercion within city council. Lastly, to our city council and members and Mayor Sanchez, do what's right tonight and finally lay this desperate attempt by Max to rest. He has a building where his flags are flown, his center has been funded by plenty of our tax dollars many times over. And I'd also like to, as a resident here, thank you, Audra, for coming and speaking, and I really do apologize for the way you're treated.
Thank you very much. William Walker, followed by Dekeck, followed by Patrick H.
Good evening, Councilor, and good evening, Mayor. I was at the park yesterday, and people came up there telling me to make this meeting. I went to South Costa Academy today giving out the word of God to the kids there. We have the honor chaplain of the Guinea organization, I'm the chaplain of the VFW, the veteran of foreign war, I'm the chaplain of the DAV, the Civil American Vet. I served in most every country and most every war zone upon the face of the earth to fight for this flag, not for the flag that they got. And I was told, this election, next election, is to council pass this for this flag to be flown. Let them know, the Christians in this city, which is 95% Christian, they can remember who these councilmembers are, and they can remember, next time they put their vote, they can, who they're gonna vote for. So I'm letting the council know right now. They have been working in the city of Oceanside, and the flag is not up yet. So what the difference is now, but the thing is, it can make a lot of enemy angry in this city to see that flag come up in this city. And right now, I'm just asking you guys to think, we as a city of God, people that serve God. And I tell you, if the flag go up, you might as well remove that word of the saying, God we trust, because God would not support Israel here. Thank you.
Thank you. Dekeck, followed by Patrick H., followed by Joseph Moreau.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. What you are considering tonight is to recognize one specific group over the endless other possible groups who feel that they, too, should have their flag flown at the City Hall, the very building that represents all individual residents within our city, the individuals that you represent. Any flag representing one specific group can and should be flown on private property, not on city government property. We as individuals may or may not be associated with or affiliated with other groups, but we want representation as well. This flag represents every person in this room, every person in our city, every person that you represent. Please do not approve the flying of another flag. If you decide this flag should be flown, how do you justify when, going forward, each of the other groups who come before you say, and they will, we are not worthy? Why do they get their flag and we do not? How do you justify that? Where do you cut it off? How do you determine that one group is better than another? Tonight, we learned that our city budget is looking at major cuts. Let's put those few dollars required for the installation of this additional flag pole to feed or house another family. Thank you.
Thank you. Patrick H., followed by Joseph Mudo, followed by Rose.
City councilmembers, you were nominated to represent the population of Oceanside. Oceanside populations is about 167,390 Americans. You were not elected to represent a special interest group, a type of people, or a lifestyle. That's exactly what this is. You were elected to represent the people as a whole, not individuals. The only flag that represents everybody is the American flag. That's the only flag. This flag unites everybody, represents everybody, and it stands for everybody. The rainbow flag divides. It only represents maybe 5% of Oceanside. Wikipedia.org says 6.5% of the American people are gay or lesbian. Statistics.com says it's 3.8. NPR.org says it's 3.6. Let's call it 5%, okay? Oh, and by the way, 65% of the people identify as Christians in the United States. But we're not asking you to fly the Christian flag. We might have to. Oceanside is a very diverse city. 46% are white, 35.9 are Hispanic, 5.1 are black, 7.0 are Asian, 5.5 are, it says, other. We all bleed red, and we're all Americans. I don't know why we are even voting on this as a possibility for Oceanside. We are not a gay city, and this is not who we are. We are a military marine city. Hurrah! We are proud, we are proud Americans. Do the right thing and vote no for this measure. If you don't vote no, you're saying, screw you to the 95% of the Oceanside people here, and you're saying yes to the 5%. So think about that.
Thank you. Joseph Moreau, followed by Rose H., followed by Ms. Strange. Ms. Strange.
Hello and good afternoon to the Oceanside City Council. I wrote an entire speech for this, especially because I went over the agenda. However, especially being here tonight, I decided to scrap it and just ask the council, especially because I see the divide between the two groups here that is in the council. So I would like every single councilmember here to answer the question, especially because it is permitted under Secretary of State, under the Secretary of State, Anthony Blinken of the previous administration, he allowed for the pride flag to be flown under the American flag on the same flag pole. So I ask every single councilmember, if this were to be voted on and you guys were to accept it, if a flag pole were to be raised, would you allow the American flag to fly above the pride flag on the same flag pole? I ask all of you.
Are you done?
I have more after that, but I just, I'm.
You can continue.
Okay. So I do ask that question.
He's got his time, please.
I also would like, if the city were to vote to have this flag fly above the flag pole, if you all would be willing to defend the LGBTQ community in the event of attacks from other members of the same community. We are all Oceansiders. That is all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Rose, followed by Ms. Strange, followed by Michael Richardson.
All right, so in Boston, a group wanted to raise the Christian flag, and they weren't allowed to. And so they were, they took it all the way to the Supreme Court, and they lost. And I did email you guys that Supreme Court case. And so basically, you are excluding all the other flags, so everybody should be able to raise their flag and fly it, so you cannot discriminate. So I want to show you Max Disposti, who's the LGBT director. He is the director of a nonprofit organization, and he is a political activist pushing his porn. porn on our innocent youth. And here's our tax dollars, the Gay Straight Alliance Awards. We do not want pride in our city. We do not want our children sexualized. We don't want a whole month of that, Max Disposti. You're in danger of losing your nonprofit status. We're going to report you to the IRS because you are definitely using your position.
Ma'am, please address the council.
To stir up hate and to push this pride agenda in our Oceanside schools, and we will not have it. This agenda is an agenda of death, and I'm here to tell you with all the love in my heart that God made you all beautifully and wonderfully, and you have a plan and a purpose, and it's not about your sexuality, it's not about your identity. God has so much more for you. And this is not the way to go. Changing your body, you're made in the image of God, and you're beautiful. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm the founder of Taxpayers Oversight for Parents and Students and a gay woman. My pride flies with the American flag. Please do not pass the gay flag resolution. This is no longer about unity or inclusion. It's about political ideology. Now linked to hypersexualized content in Oceanside Unified, the erosion of parental rights, and real psychological and physical harm to children. Some in this room, supporting the gay flag government bill, on the gay flag, excuse me, on the government buildings, even claim that minor attracted persons or maps, which is included in the gay flag now, they say pedophilia is a gender. No, it's a felony. Taxpayers should not be forced to fund your activist messaging, Esther and Eric. Fly only government flags, the ones that we taxpayers fund. Use, unless, excuse me, unless the majority of taxpayers voted in on a ballot, which I don't think they will, fly the gay flag at your own home, not here. It's been hijacked by those pushing radical agendas, destabilizing families, and preying on children under the false banner of pride. If you pass this resolution, be prepared for a lawsuit and waste taxpayers' dollars, just like the city of Boston did when they tried to pull the same thing under the Supreme Court law.
Thank you very much. Michael Richardson, followed by Pastor Janelle, followed by Michelle Seer.
I'm Michael Richardson, some people call me Mike. I have deep roots in this town. My mom's family arrived here in the 1920s. Her father was the manager of SDG&E Garage. They had two trucks to cover the entire North County. My dad's family arrived about the same time. My grandpa Richardson was a stone mason, and he started a construction company. They survived the Depression, helped build Camp Pendleton during World War II, and built many of the buildings and schools that remain in Oceanside today. My mom graduated from Oceanside High School in 1938. I graduated in 1959. My dad, Frank Richardson, and his brothers, Howard and Edwin, built many of the buildings in downtown Oceanside, operating as Richardson Brothers contractors for over 50 years. Howard was elected to the City Council in the mid, early 60s, and then he was the first elected mayor of Oceanside. My cousin Doug Avis was elected to the City Council in the 70s. My cousin's wife, Kalina Hera, was elected to the council in the 80s. Why do I tell you this? To explain why I'm passionate about this city. My family has labored for over 100 years to build and mature this, and nurture this city to make it a safe, comfortable, and happy place for our family and for yours. When I was growing up here, we all lived happily together without.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Pastor Janelle, followed by Michelle Seer, followed by Carol Lay.
Mayor, deputy mayor, and council members, thank you. If you are wondering why it is important to fly this flag, listen to what's being said tonight.
Right. Right. All right. Wait. Up.
There is an anger here that exists, and it makes our beautiful LGBTQ plus community, who, as a pastor, I will tell you, is loved by God. And I am so sorry that you have been called names. I am so sorry, and I know I'm supposed to be directing my comments to you, but I do say, I'm so sorry. We need to show as a city that we're a safe place. And these flags, these United States flags are being used to say, we're not a safe place for certain people.
Please.
So I ask that you please really consider kindness over the hatred that you're seeing tonight.
Thank you.
You're only calling out the people that are against us.
No, no. Excuse me, sir. Please.
I'm just.
Please. No. Please. Okay, we're going to take a five-minute break.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor Sanchez. We're taking a five-minute break.
Sir, if you have another outreach, I'm going to ask that you leave.
Okay. I've been asked to read the following. Section 2.1.30A of the City Municipal Code. Unauthorized remarks from the audience or members thereof, stamping of feet, unruly applause, whistles, yells, and raucous demonstration shall not be permitted by the presiding officer. If such conduct continues after directions by the presiding officer to cease, the presiding officer may order such offenders to leave the meeting room. If a person fails to leave as ordered, the person shall be removed from the meeting room by the sergeant-at-arms upon direction by the presiding officer. Any signs at a council meeting shall be placed around the rear perimeter of the council chambers or placed as directed by the presiding officers. Any person willfully disrupting the proceedings of the council and who continues to do so after being directed by the presiding officer to cease or being ruled out of order by the presiding officer, or who otherwise refuses to carry out directions or instructions given by the presiding officer for the purpose of maintaining order and decorum at the city council meeting, may be ordered by the presiding officer to leave the meeting room. If the person fails to leave as ordered, the person shall be removed from the meeting room by the sergeant-at-arms upon the direction of the presiding officer.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Navarro. Okay, we are at Michelle Seer, followed by Carol Lay, followed by David Dobbin Speck.
Good evening, Mayor Sanchez, Deputy Mayor Joyce, and council members. My name is Michelle Seer, Oceanside resident, and I'm speaking in support of this agenda item of the raising of a pride flag in the month of June here in Oceanside. And I'm shaking because of the things those people said about sexuality.
Talk to us.
Okay. Sex, I'm telling you, I'm shaking. It's nauseating when people talk about the gay community like this, and it's really disrespectful, and it's like fake news and false lies. Anyway, this comes at a critical time as the LGBT community has been even more disenfranchised since being targeted by the Trump regime with viatral hatred and the denial of basic human rights. It seems that this is the least we can do to show our support and to help this population to feel safer. I also want to say that I agree with everything that Max Disposti said and Larry Warner. I hope that the council considers the approval of this agenda item. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Carol Lay? Oh, I'm sorry, David Dobbin Speck.
Good evening, Mayor Sanchez, and other council members and staff, wherever they all went. But thank you for the opportunity. My name is David Dobbin Speck. And Esther, I want to say thank you again for reading the city presentation at our National Day of Prayer last week. Thank you, Peter, for being there in attendance. We appreciate it. Some of you this evening are advocating for the installment of a new flag pole at City Hall upon which the pride flag would be flown during the month of June. Since you're now interested in hoisting flags besides the Stars and Stripes in our California flag, I would expect you to also promote the flags of other bona fide community groups during other months of the year. It's only fair. There's a particular flag I would petition you as a council to arrange to be flown at City Hall. And as you think about this new flag pole, it would be featured during the month of May or perhaps December, whatever you choose. This flag originated over 127 years ago here in the U.S. A field of the color white represents purity and peace on this flag, blue indicates fidelity, and red stands for the shed blood of Christ on Good Friday during Holy Week, which we observed recently, the same three colors in Old Glory. Of course, I'm describing the Christian flag, and I brought along an example of it. You've not seen one before. Phrase, "A separation of church and state" may have come into your mind immediately as I lifted that flag, yet that phrase, of course, is nowhere found in our Constitution or our Declaration of Independence. Now, there may be some municipal or state policy about what you fly on a flag pole. I'm sorry. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Beth Barnham.
That was only two minutes, wasn't it?
Yeah.
That wasn't three.
Yeah, it was, everybody was getting two.
Good evening, Beth Barnham. Yes. The debate over which flags to fly leads to unnecessary controversy and anger. By focusing on our shared support of our country, state, and those who served in the military, our government can stay focused on what matters, improving the lives of those that live in Oceanside. Governments should be a neutral place towards a group affiliated or, excuse me, towards groups affiliated or personal identity. Planting flags is an outward expression designed to send a message and selecting representatives of one group or another on a government building that has no legitimate purpose. I was born on Camp Pendleton. I have lived here my entire life. There is only one flag, and that is the flag of the United States of America. If, and people have brought this before, but I mean, if you put up another flag, I will start petitioning, let's put up the Republican flag, let's do the Democrat flag, how about the Confederate flag, the flag of the NRA, the weed flag, the flag of Samoa? I mean, I went to school here. I was like one, I was friends with a group, and I was one of two Caucasians, so Filipino, Vietnamese, Hispanic, Chile. You are being discriminatory by doing this if you adopt this flag. It's not equitable at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Last person is Ron Dwyer-Voss.
Thank you, Ron Dwyer-Voss, President of Downtown Oceanside. I am a straight, white, European-descended, cisgendered male who strives to follow Jesus. When I see the pride flag, I don't feel excluded. I feel happy. I feel happy for my lesbian family members and their kids. I feel happy for my gay coworkers. I feel happy for the intersex, trans, and queer people I worship with, that they might for a moment feel seen and valued. I feel happy when I attend the Samoan Festival. I feel happy when I'm at the Juneteenth celebration. I don't feel excluded. I don't have my own flag that I need to fly because I've never been part of systemic marginalization. I've never had people say I was a cancer on society. And while one person earlier pointed out that maybe 10%, 8% of the population is gay, lots of us have family members, coworkers, and co-worshippers who are, and we want them seen by our government. I see this as an opportunity for abundance. We have, as many have pointed out, so many rich, rich cultural heritages here that could also be celebrated. So I would support the idea of continuing to celebrate positive contributions to our community, and the LGBTQI community has demonstrated over and over again that they've made positive contributions to our community. Having a flag is not that much to ask.
Thank you very much.
That concludes our speakers.
All right. Thank you. So I did have a couple of questions for the city attorney. So Mr. Burke, how would we be able to frame this, it would be a resolution, in order to address any concerns? And I believe the standard is government speech, or the requirement is government speech?
Mayor, members of the council, thank you for the question. Yes, the first amendment issue in terms of preserving government speech, as long as we don't create a limited public forum where we're opening the forum or the flag pole to all comers, the government can elect to choose its message, can direct that speech, right? So our office's recommendation in doing so, the number one way to do it is through the adoption of a policy that clearly spells that out. In the absence of a formal policy, we can do it by resolution, which sets forth some of the terms, more accurately clarifying maybe what the content of the motion is, the intent of the council to preserve prior government speech on the flag poles, the process by which it currently takes place. As you can see, we don't traditionally fly flags, so it's the, you know, a majority of the city council speaking their particular viewpoint or message. But those would be the two primary ways that we would go forward.
All right. So my motion intended that it be by resolution. Also, we already have three flag poles. So do you have a recommendation as to which one of those existing flag poles we would be able to fly it?
Sure. In the absence of acquiring an additional flag pole, as I think was maybe in the council member item, the existing city flag pole, you could fly a Canberra flag on the city flag pole in addition to the city flag, which would preserve the United States flag as well as the state of California flag on their existing flag poles without disturbance.
Right. Okay. So the motion that I have, that I made, was that we fly the pride flag in June, and it would be every year in the month of June. And I would clarify that it would be by resolution, and also that it be on the flag pole that we already have, since apparently some people have voiced concerns about spending any taxpayer money. So that would be part of my motion, part of the direction to staff. Deputy Mayor, do you have any other comments?
Yeah.
So I'll second the motion, first off. So I want to thank all the community members who came today to speak, especially those who put themselves in harm's way, knowing that they'd hear people conflate their personhood with the most awful acts. Thank you for hanging in, now that we see you. The pride flag isn't just an identity shout-out, it's a recognition of folks whose safety is at risk, and we're, and they're asking for recognition to be affirmed and feel safe in our city. The fact is, if we do raise it, many Oceansiders will be completely unaffected, but for some folks, it will mean everything. It's going to be a beautiful day, when no one in our remarkable community has a need for actions like this to feel safe here in. for actions like this to feel safe here in Oceanside. It's going to be, it'll be a beautiful day.
We listen to you.
When our loved ones, when our neighbors, when our families can live without the fear of violence and discrimination for openly loving who they do and just being who they are. That will be a beautiful day. But until that day, I hope that we stand with our people and let them know that we will not look away when they're targeted by, for harm. We're not going to be silent when our people are marginalized, because we know that all of their well-being is inextricably connected to ours. I fully support this effort, and I hope my colleagues will support raising the pride flag this year for the first time in Oceanside history.
Thank you for your, for your words. I just want to add before I go to other council members, is that I was inspired by what I feel with all of you, even though I think some of you are not feeling it right now so much, and that is for the love of this city, and for the love of you, for the love of every single person resident in Oceanside. It really does hurt me when people are unkind, and I'll say, I have a family member who didn't tell his parents that he was gay until he was graduating from high school, and I asked him, "Mijo, when did you realize you were gay?" And he said, "I think I was maybe six years old." I felt, I thought we were close, and we are. But the idea that he would think that he would receive any less love or any less acceptance by all of us, who he looked to, to be protected by. And I'm hoping that you all will open your heart. I do look for the day that we don't need to have the rainbow flag. Right now, we need it, right now. And the other inspiration, I will say, because I think, David, I've told you, I'm a Catholic, was the Pope, who passed just recently, Pope Francis, who did so much to try to bridge all of this hate by accepting our gay community, by speaking on behalf of the poor. And, you know, maybe that's not what we all, what you all liked about him, but certainly you liked something about Pope Francis. And I, I am a flawed person, and I've, and I have made a lot of mistakes in my life, but the one thing that I hope that we can do together in this city is to love one another and do our best, our very, very best, for all of us. So I do think that this is important in this time for, for a community that is really in pain right now. Early on, as a council member, my first year, in fact, a pastor who was recognized as a leader within our community had just received a leadership award from our city, made some comments that were anti-gay, anti-immigrant comments. And when I talked to him about that, he eventually came and said, "You know what? I'm going to go out and reach out to the gay community now." So I do think that let's talk to each other. Let's continue to talk to each other and not take what happened tonight as, as something we go home and say, "Let's repeat it again tomorrow." Because I'm doing this because of love and not for separatism. It's about all of us being together. Councilmember Robinson.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a prepared statement I was, I was going to read, but before I get that, so several times it was referenced, and the deputy mayor referenced it, about our LGBTQ community being unsafe and, and all that. And I know the police chief, if he was here, oh, there he is still there. I don't think he has the data with him tonight, but I would appreciate it from the city manager or police chief, if we could get a pass-through memo maybe from the police chief, giving us some statistics as to Oceanside, if they, I don't know how they capture it as far as crimes against persons, if they capture it by different minority groups or special interest groups. So I would appreciate that. I think we need to know. A lot of people have been saying things and implying that there's a lot of crime against our LGBT community, and I'd just like to know what the real facts are. I would also say this is, and I hope I get her name right, Roxanne Deathridge. You know, she, she made a very important point about this city and all the support and the things that the LGBT community gets, and we haven't flown the flag, and yet she makes these very glowing comments about the support and all the things that we do. So with that, I'm going to take just a quick second to read my prepared comments. "I want to be clear. I do not support discrimination of any kind. That is why no religious, ethnic, racial, political, or sexual orientation group flags should be flown on the city's properties. Our city should only fly the flag of the United States, the State of California, and the City of Oceanside, along with the POW flag on its flag poles. These flags represent all of us." The original proposal before us, and now that it's been changed, it isn't true, but to put that flag pole in would have cost $17,000 approximately to purchase and install a flag pole. I could not understand why as city taxpayers, we're responsible to expend any amount of money for a special interest group. And so I appreciate at least that change. What you may not know is the city already has encumbered $11,766 in support of Pride by the Beach, which means we waived $5,000 worth of fees, and we've also dedicated to spend $6,600 of city money for personnel costs and overtime. That makes up the total. I think this in itself demonstrates that the city supports our LGBTQ community. Pride flags are flown freely during Pride events, and there is no ban on their use at all. Citizens are free to fly the pride flag at their homes every day if they choose. During Pride Month, many of our police officers choose to wear a uniform patch that symbolizes the pride flag, and nobody cares. At the LGBTQ facility on Apple Street, there are banners and flags everywhere that I'm sure have special representation and meaning. But I will note that there were flags I did not see, and that was a U.S. flag, a California flag, or a city flag. And that's okay. We don't make organizations fly flags that they do not want to fly. And so that same privilege should be given to the city to maintain and fly only those flags that represent all of government and those whom we serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Weiss.
Thank you, Mayor. As has come up, in the absence of us having a flag policy, I cannot support flying only the pride flag. Without a flag policy, we will be looking at individual requests to fly alternate flags. If we're going to celebrate June as Pride Month, which is okay, then why not Black History Month? Why not National Hispanic Heritage Month? What's wrong with Women's Equality Day? My fear is, if we don't have an actual policy, we will be getting future requests, whether it's from the public or from council members, to fly alternate flags. And I would prefer that we have a comprehensive policy in lieu of dealing with this every time someone has a need to fly another flag. So in the absence of a policy, I'm sorry, I won't be able to support flying only the pride flag.
Councilmember Figueroa.
Yeah, I, first, I would support flying something during National Hispanic Month and during Juneteenth and all of that. I think that even I love when I see the Samoan flag flown in our city, something that's made in Oceanside, you know, home. Reason I love Oceanside is our diversity. I'm going to keep my comments short in lieu of time. I have spent my entire career in the public sector, working with local nonprofit organizations, serving the public and community, over 15 years, serving our marginalized communities in Oceanside and North County. All these organizations and programs receive funding by the city and local government. And all the organizations I have operated and managed throughout Oceanside and North County, we provide employment and services to our community under nondiscrimination practices to ensure equal access to, and services to all, including those with disabilities. This includes ensuring all services were and are, and were available on a nondiscriminatory basis to protect classes like race, color, religion, sex, disability, familial status, age, national origin, and sexual orientation. Each one of these organizations and programs demonstrated posters and signage to highlight these spaces were safe and inclusive for everyone that we served. Creating safe and inclusive spaces for all should be a goal, should be the goal of a public-serving entity. That has been my responsibility and approach as a public sector leader serving our community, which is to create a safe and inclusive space for our community. So with that said, I will support the motion.
There's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 3-2. Robinson, Weiss, no.
We're, we are at, we are at.
So just to clarify, we will bring back a resolution consistent with the council's direction.
Yeah. Okay, we are now at, general council member comments. Do we have any? Any comments at this time? No? All right. We're going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting to May 20, I believe it's May 21st. Is that correct? Oh, off-agenda comments. Do we have any off-agenda comments?
Yes, we do. We have 14 speakers.
14?
14. One, four.
Raise your hand if you signed up to speak on off-agenda comments. Maybe it's.
It has to be off-agenda.
Off-agenda. Which means nothing that was spoken about today. All right. One minute each. We actually are beyond our 10 o'clock cutoff, so one minute each. Go ahead.
Our first speaker is allegedly Audra.
Audra.
To be followed by Bart.
Followed by Bart, followed by Kleda Ryojas.
You're not allowed to speak.
That's correct.
Okay. Audra?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Mr. Mike?
Hello? Is it on? Okay. It's, it's very apparent that there is significant support for pedophilia in this city. Rick and Peter, thank you. But it is very disturbing to know how much support there is for pedophilia across the board. I don't understand it. When people talk about children being the future, how can we support having sex with a child and flying a flag that promotes it? You're going to have to meet our maker one day, and you're going to have to answer to these things that you're saying, that you promote, support, and encourage pedophilia. So I would ascertain that you probably have child porn on your computer, and you are a pedophile as well. Thank you very much. Bart, followed by Kleda Ryojas, followed by Nikki D.
Mayor Sanchez and the tolerant city council, it's a privilege to be up here. I wouldn't be doing this in Moscow. Thank you for showing how democracy wears each of us down. But thank you very much for the opportunity to share with you that we've decided to host a, I run a nonprofit California public charitable organization, and we're going to be hosting a 3.6-mile walk and run in your city on Saturday, June 21st, at 9:30 a.m., with a warm-up by Coastal Corp Pilates, the distance symbolized 3.6 million pounds of nuclear waste currently stored at Santa Nofera Beach. This event is being held in partnership with a whole bunch of sponsors and a community celebration. We'll have live music and a meaningful conversation. We hope that the city council will help spread the world, the word, and we're grateful to be presenting this run in your town.
Bart, I didn't recognize you with a hat. I guess.
Same, just less hair, but I'm so grateful for the city council and what you, what I've witnessed tonight.
Thank you, Bart. Thank you for everything you do.
Can I give this to the?
Yes, please. Kleda Ryojas, followed by Nikki D., followed by Jimmy Not.
Yes. Kleda Ryojas. Obviously, there's definitely a grave threat of sexual grooming and trafficking here in Oceanside, and it is apparent, Jimmy, you represent my area, I'm very disappointed in you. I work closely with sex trafficking rescue units such as Giddings Army. I understand the cold, hard facts and how predators operate. So Jimmy, I will be meeting with you. Studies show 74% of children who are exploited are approached in environments they frequent, gangs, schools, and Eric, you know about that, and local outreach communities, of which we have plenty here in Oceanside. So I'll kick to it, because I only have a minute. It is our moral responsibility to address these issues head-on. We must implement policies that shield our children from sexual exploitation rather than normalize it. What you did tonight normalizes it, Jimmy. So I urge each and every one of you to recognize that you have a role in this. I will be contacting each of you and expect your support in combat, combating sex trafficking here in Oceanside.
Thank you very much.
Esther, you know about it too.
Followed by Jimmy Not.
We, the people, elect you into office, and we have the right and duty to throw off such government and provide something new to secure our future security. It is our responsibility. So these facts will be submitted for all to see. You just told somebody who approves children being state-sanctioned kidnapped from their parents who love them and adore them, that they can now go into these homes and be celebrated in the month of June. And what will happen there? Will we elected to go even further than that? Jimmy, you don't look so happy after what you just did. I know the Lord will impress upon your hearts, and I know that you all answer to your Creator in the name of him.
Thank you. Jimmy Not, followed by Patty Kay.
Public has a right. This is their chamber. What's good for the goose is good for the gander. If you restrict the public's rights, you should also restrict your rights. Because it's very simple. If you take and look, this, this is time. What you're doing is, when you take and reduce the time even down to a minute, you're restricting the public's right. You need to continue your deliberations to as time certain the next day, or put it into a workshop. Because what you're doing is, is you're telling us that you're inefficient and that you're overpacking your agenda. Please respect the public.
Thank you, Patty Kay, followed by Joseph Murrow, followed by Rose H.
I refuse to be mislabeled and misrepresented. This is not tonight, and never has been tonight, against the gay community. We are bound by our God, Eric, to love everyone, including you. We have watched you come from this, from the Education Department, where you are allowing grooming, and come to the council now and spread this, and you're pulling Jimmy into it, Jimmy. Beware. This is never about, this is not about the gay community. It was about a particular, one community. one community demanding a separate privilege that no one else has. Erect a separate privilege. Excuse me, I'm not supposed to repeat what was said. So this is not, and it will not be ever, about a particular person. We all have neighbors, friends, and family members of that community.
Thank you, Patty, for those words. Joseph Murrow, followed by Rose H, followed by Patrick H.
Joseph left.
Joseph left. Rose H. Rose, you're still here. Patrick H. Rose H.
Rose E.
Okay, sorry. Kay Sue?
Okay, I'll be Kay Sue.
No. Thank you very much. So Kay Sue's not here.
Jimmy, disappointed.
Carolton Bolton, she's not here.
Very disappointed.
How about Ron Dwyer-Voss? He's gone, right? Gambler?
Absolutely, I'm here. How you guys doing this fun, lovely thing? According to Dr. Altoni Fauci, if you hang around gay people, you could catch AIDS. If you drink from a water fountain, you could catch AIDS. So if you want to know where this hate towards gay people comes from, you could look at our government. Matter of fact, if you want to go ahead and commit voter fraud, it is not that hard. ACLU made it possible for anyone to do it. All you need to do, much like many of these different groups that these people sign up with, commit registration voter fraud. In order to commit registration voter fraud, all you need is someone's driver's license. You could fill out a registration card, change their mailing address, change their signature, and vote for them. Many organizations, like, let's just say, organizations helping out homeless, have a great supply of names, addresses, phone numbers, driver's license, where they could go ahead and steal votes. Homeless people don't typically vote, but since we've been allowing vote by mail, they are churning out at record number.
Thank you very much.
So fuck you!
D. Okay. All right. Then I guess that's it. So meeting adjourned until May 21st, 3:30 for closed session. Thank you.[1708.15][1708.15][music]